Always holders.
Good evening, Vacaville. This is the, good evening, Vacaville. This is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting in the city of Vacaville, May 14, 2024. May I have a roll call?
Council agency authority member Stockton.
Here.
Silva. Chapman.
There.
Roberts.
Here.
Wiley.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Ritchie.
Here.
Mayor Chair Carley.
Here. If you're able, will you please rise for a moment of silence? Councilmember Stockton, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes in tonight's agenda?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, approval of the minutes, do I have a motion?
Approved the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And tonight, we do have a few presentations. The first one's going to be a CAL-ED Award of Merit plaque, and this is focusing on our Economic Development Director. What I'd like to do, and not just for him, but for the city's sake, is just share a few thoughts. It's really exciting and an honor to share that the city and its economic development team and partners are being honored by the California Association for Local Economic Development. And as many of you may know or not, in 2020, the city of Vacaville, with the help of many partners and industry professionals, launched the Biotechnology and Advanced Manufacturing Initiative. And this initiative was developed to help the city attract more biomanufacturing companies to Vacaville and create not just good-paying jobs, but long-term careers for our residents and a future career track for our children. So at this time, I'd like to invite Bob Burris, who's the Board Member and Treasurer for CAL-ED, to come down to the podium. Good evening, Mr. Burris. Different last name, but similar.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager Bush. It's really an honor to be here, really an honor and privilege. I want to thank you for your time. My name's Bob Burris. I'm Deputy Chief Economic Development Officer for Rural County Representatives of California, better known as RCRC. Was a former president and CEO for the Solano Economic Development Corporation for four years, up to about three years ago, so had the privilege of working with many of you when I was in Solano County. But more importantly, tonight, I'm a board member and executive committee member for CAL-ED. As the mayor mentioned, the California Association for Local Economic Development, the largest economic development state organization in the nation with seven to eight hundred members now of economic development professionals. Every year, CAL-ED recognizes a very few number of economic development projects and initiatives that stand above the rest in California. And this is out of several dozen nominations throughout the state. And I'm very honored to be able to provide one of those awards to the city of Vacaville tonight. Based on Vacaville's unique position as a mature market in both life sciences and advanced biomanufacturing, the city team of City Manager Bush, Don Burris, the Director of Economic Development, in partnership with Matt Gardner, the Chairman and Board Member for the California Biomanufacturing Center, and also, I might add, the Lead for CBRE's National Life Science Effort, and Professor Jim DeClo, distinguished professor of biological sciences and biotechnology for Solano Community College, and I'm happy to say me, as a member of the Solano Economic Development Efforts, when I was here, successfully collaborated to develop economic development investment strategy that capitalized on Vacaville's strengths and the implementation of a strategy known to be economy-changing, adding quality jobs and private investment, as well as increasing prosperity and opportunities for all in an industry that has tremendous opportunity and growth potential inside of a city and a region that has the same. So with the support of Congressman John Gueramendi in the fall of 2020, and the effort received national attention, within six months, the city had their first company, which we're very happy to see, Aginis Bio acquired a property to build almost a million square feet, a biotech campus. And then over the next three years, the economic development team was able to secure more investments from Polaris Pharmaceuticals, from LG Chem, from Transwestern Ventures, from Lonza, Metler, Toledo, and Rainin. So incredible, incredible achievement. And honestly, this is one of the best examples that I've ever seen of true community and regional economic development collaboration statewide or even nationwide. And as they say in economic development, it's truly a team sport, and I think that that can be recognized with the effort that took place here over the last few years. So with that, this evening, CAL-ED is pleased to present a strategy development team with the Award of Merit for Collaborations and Partnerships for the city of Vacaville's Biotechnology and Advanced Manufacturing Initiative. I think with that, I provide the award to City Manager Aaron Bush.
You can vote. Really, it's exciting to have an award like that. So much of what a community is, there's the typical programs and projects that we have, but the initiatives that we've embarked on, it is a team effort, and it certainly is focused on bringing good-paying jobs, keeping our workforce and our families local, and in a very short term, we've really seen some impact of this and more to come. So thank you very much for coming here tonight with that presentation. And next on our agenda is the National Police Week Proclamation, something that's near and dear to a lot of our hearts, mine included. I'm going to go ahead and have Chief Ian Smutsler to come down here. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
I got you there.
Good evening. I used to using these as much, but I gotta put them on.
Get used to it.
I know, I am. Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Ritchie, members of the council, city staff, members of our community, on behalf of the Vacaville Police Department, I humbly accept the proclamation recognizing the significance of National Police Week 2024. It is with deep gratitude and appreciation that we receive this honor from Mayor Carley and the esteemed members of the council. This week holds profound meaning for law enforcement officers across our nation, as we pause to honor the bravery, dedication, and sacrifice of those who have sworn to protect and serve our communities. It is a time to remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty and to express our heartfelt gratitude to all who wear the badge and especially those family members who support them. As we accept the proclamation, we do so with renewed commitment to our mission, to safeguard our neighborhoods, foster trust and partnership with the communities we serve, and uphold the rule of law. We recognize that our work is not done in isolation, but in collaboration with our fellow citizens, community leaders, and the full city of Vacaville team across all city departments and elected officials who have given us tremendous support. This proclamation serves as a reminder of the importance of our shared responsibility in keeping our streets safe and our community strong. It is a testament to the unwavering support of our city leadership and a call to action for all residents to join us in building a safer and more inclusive city for generations to come. In closing, I want to express my deepest gratitude to Mayor Carley, the City Council, and the residents of Vacaville for this meaningful recognition. Together, let us continue to honor the legacy of our fallen heroes, support our law enforcement officers, and work towards a future where peace and justice prevail. Thank you.
With that, would I like to go, yeah. So don't go anywhere, because I would like to share the proclamation, but appreciate your heartfelt words. You certainly served alongside of so many of the others that I have called a family of mine for decades, and so it's an honor to go ahead and share this with you, but also with our community. Whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Vacaville play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community, and our nation's law enforcement officers serve with courage, dedication, and strength. They fearlessly enforce our laws, even at the risk of personal peril, safeguarding our property, our liberty, our lives, and we owe them and their families our full and enduring support. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that the members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas our police department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service, and now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the city of Vacaville, and on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 12 through the 18th, 2024, National Police Week. Congratulations. Next, what we have is a Public Works Week proclamation, and with that, I believe, our Director of Public Works, Brian McLean, is the person that will kick this off. You brought some help, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. It's that time of year again, it's National Public Works Week, and to help me with this presentation tonight, two individuals from our engineering team who are working hard every day to make Vacaville a better place to live. This year's theme is advancing quality of life for all, and that truly goes to the heart of what the Public Works mission is. Old-fashioned way. One thing I would like to bring to council's recognition this morning, or this evening, is Public Works has added a new feature on our city of Vacaville website, on the Public Works website itself. It's called Investing in Our Community, and it's a way for the public and for council to be able to track what we're doing in Public Works. Those projects which you approve, which we undertake, will be located on this website, nice, neat, all the staff reports, the maps, the exhibits, all the information that an individual needs to understand what Public Works looks like in the city of Vacaville, and your commitment, council's commitment to Public Works and ensuring that Vacaville continues to improve every day. One of the other things that we're doing is we're keeping track of our street maintenance work, which is an inquiry that we receive quite often, so we're breaking that piece out so that you can also see specifically what we're doing to improve and maintain the city's streets. Finally, we're keeping a running total, so your investment, those costs, those expenses that we incur for these projects, we're keeping a running total throughout the year of what those investments into the community are for both the current year and then also showing what that investment is in the previous year, just to give you an idea of the millions of dollars that you're approving that we're implementing to improve the city of Vacaville. At this point, I'm going to pass the baton over to Sean, and he's going to talk about, both Sean and Andrea will be talking about, some of the terrific projects the city of Vacaville Public Works team has done over the last 12 months.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to talk about a few park projects that we completed in the last year.
And so over the last number of years, the Little Leagues have requested lighting at those parks. So in 2023, the city entered a source well contract with Musco Lighting to install six 80-foot LED light poles at each of the parks. So the total improvements that the city actually put into place was 12 light poles at a cost of $1.2 million. I'm going to hand it off to Andrea, and she's going to talk about some other projects.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On January 9th of this year, the City Council accepted the completed construction project or work for the Markham School Pedestrian Improvements Project. The project involved installation of sidewalk facilities to close existing sidewalk gaps along Brown Street to facilitate safe pedestrian travel, and installed two radar feedback signs to caution against speeding as seen on the slide. The construction was completed at a total cost of $180,000. On the maintenance side, our Public Works Maintenance Division is hard at work to maintain and improve the city's infrastructure, providing a wide range of services to the community, such as maintaining 135 acres of turf across 39 city parks, maintaining 670 city fleet vehicles and equipment, crack sealed over 26 lane miles of city streets, and maintained over 500,000 square feet of public city facilities. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. I have just one final thing. A sincere thanks from everybody in Public Works. Your support has been instrumental in our success, and we couldn't do it without you. So thank you, Council.
Appreciate all that you do. And so with that, I would like to read the proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas National Public Works Week is a celebration of men and women across the United States who provide and maintain the public infrastructure and services collectively known as Public Works. The theme of this year's 64th Annual National Public Works Week is advancing quality of life for all, and it is in the interest of the public for citizens and civic leaders to better understand the integral role the public infrastructure plays in protecting the environment, improving public health and safety, contributing to economic vitality, and enhancing the overall well-being of every community. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, parks, public buildings, mass transportation, recycling, solid waste collection, energy conservation, and storm water management. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are dependent upon the efforts and skill of the qualified Public Works professionals who serve our citizens with dedication and a commitment to their communities. So now therefore be it resolved that I, John Carley, Mayor of the City of Vacaville, and on behalf of the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 25th of 2024, National Public Works Week. Congratulations. And we have one more presentation for this evening, and you want to make a comment? You have a question. So we have a question. Councilmember Wiley.
So if someone wants to go to that website, do they start at the city website and go to the Public Works tab, or is it, you said, a separate website?
Same website.
Okay, it sounds very useful, and I want people to be able to find it. So start at the city. Thank you.
So same website, and just start at the city and just follow the link. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. And with that, we have one more recognition and proclamation, and that is for Mental Health Awareness Month. And I believe our contacts would be Mayor Montano and Zaire Persley-Hurt. Come forward, please. You can pull that towards you. Just don't be shy. I know you're not shy.
Good evening, Mayor Carley and Councilmembers. Unfortunately, Myda Montano is not able to be with me tonight. My name is Zaire Persley-Hurt. I'm a mental health clinician with the Vacaville City Police Department's First Unit. In 1949, Mental Health America started recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month with the purpose of promoting awareness, offering vital resources, and education, and advocating for mental health and well-being for everyone. We all have mental health. It includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. Mental health impacts how we feel, think, and act. It is our ability to relate to others, problem, and manage our stressors. According to the Mental Health America, one in five people will experience a mental health condition in any given year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact mental health. About half of Americans will meet the criteria for a diagnosable mental health condition sometime in their lives, with symptoms starting by age 14 for most people. To bring it closer to home, in 2023, there were 62 individuals who died by in Solano County. Vacaville had the highest suicide rate, with 19 of those individuals being Vacaville residents. In 2023, there were 100 individuals who died by overdose in Solano. 100% were determined to be accidental deaths. Of those, 15 were residents. 59 of those overdoses included fentanyl. Our youth surgeon in the Vacaville Police Department offers an array of services provided by school resource officers, a family support worker, program coordinators, youth development manager, mental health coordinator, counseling interns. One of those services is counseling provided by interns in the Bright School District. In 2023, counseling interns provided 1,293 counseling services to 244 16 schools. Primary concern: anxiety, depression, family conflict, and skills. Our Family Investigative Service Team provides services to identify items of abuse in our community. These services are providing support workers, a mental health clinician, and mentor. This may include referrals to local mental healthers, court accompaniment, rest, and victim advocacy. Our police department also provides services, Vacaville Family Resource Center, our FRC, where any community member can meet with a worker for a comprehensive assessment, provide in-house services to those who call referrals to outside agencies. Support workers provide case management to their group, follow-up appointments at a minimum of six months, and connect to any needed service client needs additional support. In 2023, families assist the community members with 247 audits, 450 appointments, and 398 walk-in meetings. FRC provides basic needs assistance, counseling, and referrals to all. Police staff, including officers, coordinators, mental health clinics, and family support workers, enroll in responding to residents in crisis and ongoing support. Formation, call the FR 707-466608.
Thank you for that. Before I remission, this is some chair, and I know this, and you know, we have something real here. There's very few of a city of our size, let alone maybe a city of a million, have the resources and the coordination, first and also our FRC, as a training to teach skills through different educations, and they get their certificate to go on to be professionals. It happens right here, and it's for me to work in the police department and around first in the FRC to see all the good work that you could call the team. So thank you for sharing that, what I'd like to do proclamation, but it really does mean a lot for me and others who all the work that you all do. So thank you. Whereas the mental health of our city is essential, emotional and economic security of our families, communities, and businesses. Mental illness people of all ages, races, ethnicity, and income level. And where Americans experience difficulty and stress in this, there are body of research that specific tools can use to better challenges their mental health and well-being. Feelings of personal fears of stigma and discrimination prevent many citizens living with mental seeking help. The national mental health reminds us all that seeking help is a strength, not a weakness. With early and effective, many individuals' mental health conditions suffer and lead full lives. Schools, agencies, health leaders, and need to promote wellness, educate the public on mental related issues, poor prevention effort drive to eliminate the discrimination of mental illness. Now therefore solved that I, Carley, Mayor of the City of Vacaville, and on the Vacaville City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2020 Mental Health Awareness. Congratulations. All right, we're going to reconvene this meeting where we left off. Because of technical difficulties, we completed our consent calendar, so we will now move on to business from the floor. And this is an opportunity for any member of the public wishing to address the council on an item that would be within our jurisdiction, but not on tonight's agenda. So you're more than welcome to come forward, and as much as you can, you can line up and be prepared if you want to be next. And so I'll open it up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Tony Maras. I'm president of your local Solano Community Tennis Association. My message tonight is simply that our parent organization, the United States Tennis Association, has declared this month, May 2024, to be National Tennis Month. Now tennis is more than a fun game to play, listening to some of the conversations going on earlier. Research shows that for players of all ages, tennis improves heart health, tennis promotes mental well-being, helps build and keep friendships, increases fitness levels, improves coordination, agility, and balance, raises self-confidence while lowering tension. Tennis is a great vehicle for teaching kids life lessons also, like how to handle setbacks, being creative and resilient in a structured environment, or getting along with others. Youth who play tennis tend to get better grades, are better behaved, apply to college more, are more community-minded and well-rounded, are healthy and less prone to risky behaviors. On the other end of the spectrum, research also shows the life expectancy of tennis players is about 9.7 years longer than the normal sedentary population, and tennis is the best sport in that regard. Nationally, 24 million Americans play tennis. Now locally, in the City of Vacaville, Aaron King, Duncan MacLeod, and Solano Tennis run a very robust youth tennis program through the city's programs. For the adults, the tennis courts at Centennial Park have served as our home base for UST League tennis play for the last several years on the weekends. We've had as many as 13 adult teams trying to play league tennis on those courts at one time, and that's a challenge with only four of the courts. There are also numerous groups playing recreationally on the 17 city courts that exist throughout the week. And then there's my octogenarian foursome playing geezer tennis on the weekends. So the spectrum from young to aging out. These activities will not be possible without the city's support and facilities. They are key to the tennis community's efforts to keep Vacaville active and healthy, and we thank you for that. And if Aaron King is not here, I want to just mention that part of this National Tennis Month, Aaron King, Solano Tennis, with the city, is providing a kids' tennis party this coming Sunday at North Orchard Park. It's open to everybody. Come see if you've never played tennis, come try it. If you have, come see what's going on, all kinds of activities for the kids. So.
May I have that?
Certainly, sir.
And thank you for the presentation, and tell Mr. King I said hi. Tell him I said hi. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. The angry old man is here again. Okay, the average person trusts the city council members to run the city. The average person trusts that the city council members are looking out for their best interest. Sadly, this average person...
All right, we're going to reconvene this meeting where we left off because of technical difficulties. We completed our consent calendar, so we will now move on to business from the floor. And this is an opportunity for any member of the public wishing to address the council on an item that would be within our jurisdiction, but not on tonight's agenda. So you're more than welcome to come forward and as much as you can, you can line up and be prepared if you want to be next. And so I'll open it up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Tony Maras. I'm president of your local Solano Community Tennis Association. My message tonight is simply that our parent organization, the United States Tennis Association, has declared this month, May 2024, to be National Tennis Month. Now tennis is more than a fun game to play, listening to some of the conversations going on earlier. Research shows that for players of all ages, tennis improves heart health, tennis promotes mental well-being, helps build and keep friendships, increases fitness levels, improves coordination, agility and balance, raises self-confidence while lowering tension. Tennis is a great vehicle for teaching kids life lessons also, like how to handle setbacks, being creative and resilient in a structured environment, or getting along with others. Youth who play tennis tend to get better grades, are better behaved, apply to college more, are more community minded and well-rounded, are healthy and less prone to risky behaviors. On the other end of the spectrum, research also shows the life expectancy of tennis players is about 9.7 years longer than the normal sedentary population, and tennis is the best sport in that regard. Nationally, 24,000, or I'm sorry, 24 million Americans play tennis. Now locally in the city of Vacaville, Aaron King, Duncan McCloud, and Solano Tennis run a very robust youth tennis program through the city's programs. For the adults, the tennis courts at Centennial Park have served as our home base for US state league tennis play for the last several years on the weekends. We've had as many as 13 adult teams trying to play league tennis on those courts at one time, and that's a challenge with only four on the courts. There are also numerous groups playing recreationally on the 17 city courts that exist throughout the week. And then there's my octogenarian force and playing geezer tennis on the weekends. So the spectrum from young to aging out. These activities will not be possible without the city's support and facilities. They are key to the tennis community's efforts to keep Vacaville active and healthy, and we thank you for that. And if Aaron King is not here, I want to just mention that part of this National Tennis Month, Aaron King, Solano Tennis with the city is providing a kids tennis party this coming Sunday at North Orchard Park. It's open to everybody. Come see if you never played tennis, come try it. If you have, come see what's going on, all kinds of activities for the kids. So.
May I have that?
Certainly, sir.
Thank and thank you for the presentation and tell Mr. King I said hi. Tell him I said hi. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. The angry old man is here again. Okay, the average person trusts the city council members to run the city. The average person trusts that the city council members are looking out for their best interest. Sadly, this average person's trust is sometimes misplaced. Two weeks ago, the reporter let it be known that Vice Mayor Ritchie strongly favors California Forever, and he had a whole lot of eloquent things to say about it. The next day, the reporter mentioned that, oh, by the way, council member Ritchie has two DBAs doing business as that affiliate him with California Forever. California, what is it? California Forever Homes and California Forever Home Loans. Vice Mayor Ritchie is already a very successful businessman. He's about to become really, really successful. I congratulate you, sir. You are getting a better deal than the council member, or should I say, the wife of the council member from Fairfield, who apparently was bought off for 4,000 bucks. Okay. I've been looking in the reporter, hoping that one of you would have rebooted the vice mayor for his betrayal of public trust, but I looked in vain. It hasn't happened. I don't think it's going to happen. The California Forever is going to be the biggest environmental disaster to hit here for a very, very long time. Aside from the footprint of the city itself, you guys seem to forget, tens of thousands of more acres of wetland are going to be paved over for the six lanes that's going to be needed for Highway 12, and the four to six lanes is going to be needed for Highway 113. Go take a drive out there and look at what is going to be lost. The Sassoon Marsh is barely hanging on. The Delta is barely hanging on. You guys all make a big, a big display about, oh, we did an environmental cleanup day in my, in my district. We're environmental heroes. You're sitting around, you're going to let the Delta be destroyed on the hope that you're going to get some, you know, redevelopment money from California Forever. Take a look at how they do business. If you think you're going to get any table scraps from the multi-billionaires from Silicon Valley who intend to dominate this county, and they will, think again. You may as well go down fighting because none of you is going to be here to spend any of that redevelopment money. They'll be putting, putting in their own people.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Carley, city council and city staff. It's me, Frank again. And tonight, I'm excited to inform to you all that recently on April 30th, the DEA has finally approved the rescheduling of cannabis from a Schedule I drug like heroin and LSD to a Schedule III drug like testosterone and Tylenol, marking an historical event for the country, reversing over 50 years of strict treatment and legislation on cannabis. Now that the rescheduling has been approved by the DEA, it will go through a federal rescheduling process, including scientific studies being taken and even public comments, before expecting to be approved and signed into legislation by the end of 2024. What does this mean for the country and for the industry? First, it speaks volumes that the agencies like HHS, DEA and FDA have all reached a consensus and officially proclaimed that cannabis is a legitimate medicine and that it should be represented in legislation. It means more optimism around other cannabis legislation like the Safer Banking Act, the Cannabis Administration Opportunity Act, pushing to end federal prohibition on cannabis while focusing on research and restorative justice, and possible removal of tax code 2028E, reduce strain on cannabis businesses, allowing them to retain more of their profits, pretty much less of them shutting down due to high taxes. Now, this is all great and all, but what does this mean for us? Well, as we know, I've been for our cannabis program for some time, and this rescheduling can mean more state finance, more state financial and economic support for cities like Vacaville to deploy our programs in the near future. More research and data becoming available that our city staff can utilize towards decisions, less tax strain, our cannabis businesses will be in better shape to provide the amount of local taxes Vacaville would need to make this program beneficial, and potentially reducing the costs on the customer's end, ultimately helping our residents who are low-income, fixed incomes, elderly. As the country moves forward with cannabis, I believe we as a city should too. Often here in our meetings, just like tonight, is that Vacaville is like, is Vacaville is a city like no place in the Bay Area. We may not be a large city, but this is an amazing place to live and raise a family. And although it's a family city, there's still innovation and development going on. I mean, we have tourist attractions, just like the outlets, just a couple of miles over from where we have some horse trails over by Brown's Valley. This is truly a hidden gem, and I attribute that to all the people who've made this city, cities culture what it is. I think that if the city decided to do cannabis as a cannabis program, have the right data, team and community behind us to do this as if not better than other cities, I think it's time the city and deploys our own cannabis program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not going to have a whole say here. I just went at the vice mayor and let him know that I don't appreciate up here laughing at the moment, and you can play back the tapes several times you were here and kind of laughing and giggling about that. Is it just insensitive, I guess? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Milene Cludier, I'm a business owner and wanted to let you guys know that I am for the forward and development, and we want the city to go in more revenue. I know we're lacking revenue and budgets because sales tax revenue, but I'm very concerned as a citizen's town about California, listening to the speak. I agree a lot of what he says, but what I'm very concerned about, and many of you who are sitting on the panel, on the council, I recommend friends to vote for in your districts because I'm in all of you and your commitment to this city and your commitment, making sure you're doing it by us as citizens. And like the man said, we don't all pay attention. We want on you guys to make decisions for us as. Six of what came forward in porting at Calver, the optics look, it's bad, and the contrast is there, and I'm hoping that all will actually consider that. California Forever has, and they can come and, and buddy, they pay off everybody exactly what they want, hoping that you all, the wherewithal to stand up to like that and say, this is not right for our, if it isn't right for our. There's, you know, there's questions have not been answered. There are missions I haven't been, and of them is the water. And, and I know you are in, in a battle right, our water. Just consider options and please sit at your constituency when you're making these decisions. And we all want progress, we all want this city to have. But as in, I'm a furniture store, I have a lot of furniture, and those houses filled with people, they'll furniture too. But I also, what's best for this and for county, I raised my chair, I plan to retire. So these key thoughts, when you're word, write for your constituents. Thank you.
To just remind is, is there's an agenda about it forever. Is it online? Yes. But we're not in session tonight to have any action or any interaction violation of what this would be. I ask you can share your thoughts, carry and resonate.
Over a little era, citizens of the city in favor of restoring these, and if it's 10 more years to get safer, so in favor of these, do not live in favor of them, paychecks to them. They will use and necessary projects for who or what seem like these are willing to make this. And if they, why should we use facilities? My under is that the power era project is San Francisco, and maybe we give that, but at what companies are from PG and then act for two digits more, how will that save consumers' money? Pete surely pass on to the customer. So I benefit in these at all. If we do, we should have the faith in the technology and actions. I think the more you would chant some time and into what you want and where.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. First heard of this proposed, it was naive, it was going on. Like many, we merely learn about best land batteries and convince their project right for our. No idea were really was their industry energy company. At the very meeting indicated that the substation here attractive to the company. We have already informed you of the measures that these pose, systems fires and continue to do. In the mini, it exploded into fire. They only used a COVID away from other, this happened to Ukraine's line, do they? The DOD now admitting that systems connect grid potentially and trigger heating process. Congressmen will also be concerned. 2009, the energy was a 16 of cyber world wide. Then a quarter battery could have qualms with care safety, a cornu report in fact about it. We now have had companies in their intel best Vacaville for insights or outs limits. We'll continue mode purely.
Our neighbor Dixon also, they to find kind of disaster and hire consultant, made a president on each one. That's how districts initially says they don't quit re, that urgent, Rangers are.
Council, my name is Alkin, and I'm about to say that I won't urge you to, there are some, we don't talk if you want to be right next to how in backyard. I think it would be important so that you can say it's safe, at least them, just first to put, designate appropriate is where they.
Good evening, members of the city. I'm going to set record, urge the city to vote in moratorium. Current policies don't address, and it status means more developer into the speculative lands available substation, and just going to ignore their citizens during X. This is a last performance, dudes, maybe fifth, get in for the count, and optations for Vac, that's best for in their.
Right to go forward and to, and why to support, not why not go forward, why to support the moratorium? Excuse me for that frog on the slip. Not going to repeat, the last time we all met, when we voted the way we did in regards to minority, I'm, I'm, I'm still in that place. When we hired the consulting firm, why hire them if we're not going to listen to the data that they bring back to us? You've heard me say, safety first, safety for the residents. It's about the city of Vacaville. Why would we want to endanger any section, any portion? It affects the whole. So I'm, so with that, I'm saying that timing is everything, and I think in due time, there are going to be other sources of resources available that are going to come, and we will be able to choose which one would be best for Vacaville. And so, you know, you hear us say a lot about data being data driven, it's very important. You have something factual to hold on to, to look back on. I made this decision based upon this and not have any regrets. It's not a gut feeling, oh, I better go this way, that way. No. So with that, I am in favor of the moratorium.
Vice Mayor Ritchie.
So I'll try to talk briefly. The comments made by council members, I really stand by that. It was really inspiring. I had that, being an opportunity to reach out to members of the community, been passionate. And nothing's changed for me since the last time we all met at Solano Community College and heard the passion in the room, and we brought this for, for us. It's really about the Vaca Dixon substation. One of the comments were about land. We're going to need to collaborate with the county. If they choose to go far the way from the substation to find it financially feasible to make it work, there, we're going to need to have a very good cooperating relationship with the county to make sure it protects the city of Vacaville, because we don't have as much land as you think you do. They're going to be smart, they're going to go into the county, and they're going to still endanger the city. So we got to make sure we work together and be collaborative. That first and foremost, this is going to be a team effort by the community, the city and the county. You know, some of the comments made were peak time, offset the grid. I haven't seen a benefit yet for us. I mean, to let a corporation company come here and plant something that's probably pretty dangerous at the current technology level into our community without us getting any kind of benefit for us. Everything so far been provided with places storage system next to the substation, and they're basically like stock trading, they do a bid ask spread on the power, they would sell it back to PG&E. In case we need it, there's no switch for the city of Vacaville to get power. So we'll be trading off our safety and health risk for a corporation to make money without actual benefit to us. So I really urge companies out there to make sure it's motion beneficial for you and for the city of Vacaville for safety, and if that scenario, if we need it, be able to provide us power too. If you're in a backyard, serve us, you're going to serve your shareholders, you're going to serve your company, but don't bring something to our community without the fact that you're going to profit off us, have all the danger, but we have no reward for it. So please, if you're out there listening, yes, probably are, only propose stuff that's going to be beneficial for you and the city and safety. It might take a little longer to make money, but do the right thing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. And the one thing that I'll also say is, is again, thank you to members of the community because you've helped inform us and we've learned along the way. Interestingly enough, some people keep talking about, we're going to have to wait for the next greatest technology. All we're really looking for is the innovation that's occurring at the speed of light these days. The lightest and greatest technology isn't a four-hour best, it's a hundred-hour best. And it's, again, it's not just one year old, it's actually 50 years old. Westinghouse Electric, they created it a long time ago, and they just figured out how to, how to make it so it's not only safe, but it's cheap, and it's long lasting. And so I just believe as an optimist that there's a real opportunity to use this time wisely and do it together as a community. Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thank you. Try not to reiterate too much what previous council members have said, but yeah, our main priority is safety. Wait until there's technology out there, which smut is currently working on, so the iron flow, there's working out software issues with that. So it's probably going to be feasible technology for other cities here in the near future. As far as emergency management side of it, like the local emergency planning committee, which runs by CALOES regions, doesn't really have any plan to address major lithium fires. And so we need to progress on that safety aspect and training and proper equipment to respond to that. So this is where the moratorium comes in to allow us time to address those issues. As I said, I'm not opposed to batteries, it's just a matter of finding the right one to go in. And regarding one of the written public comments we got, which I believe will be posted on the site from the CISA. So this one actually caused me some confusion when I first saw it because CISA to me means something very different than what's on here, which is California Energy Storage Alliance. And in here it's talking about safety of fires and knowing, so there are no reported injuries from a New York fire, no harmful levels of toxins detected, and also air, soil and water. But the issue I have with this and what caused me confusion, so I know a lot of people in here do their research and look at all this stuff later, is to me in the emergency management world, that means California Emergency Services Association. So when you Google it, make sure you look at the full name of it, so there's no confusion on what you're actually looking at and with this document. With that, again, yeah, I'm in support of the moratorium, primarily on public safety side of things, and wait until we get the better technology out. Thank you.
And Councilmember Stockton?
Yes. So before I make my motion, I want to thank my community. You never missed a meeting. You called, you contacted me, you put signs in front of my house of how you wanted me to vote, but you kept me informed and you were definitely engaged, and I'm very appreciative of the commitment that I've seen from all of you that continued meeting after meeting to come. And so with that, I would like to motion that we approve moving forward with the 45-day moratorium.
So that, hold on a second. So that's by title only, it does require a fourth, fifth roll call vote, and this will also waive the reading of the title per government code. And so we have a motion in a second, and have a roll call.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
And Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ritchie?
Yes.
Mayor Carley?
Yes. So with that, we will, we'll move forward and believe that we'll, this will have to have the 45-day period, and then you'll come back to us. All right. All right, we'll move on to item 8B. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. This next item before you are several actions related to the implementation of energy conservation measures at city facilities. We have Brian McClain, Public Works Director, and Samantha Brown, Program Manager from our Public Works Department to give you a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For, before we begin, I want to mention that the bank financing documents for this project, for the NG project, that would be attachment eight, attachment nine, were added to the city's website this morning and provided to you for review. Tonight, Samantha Brown, our Program Manager of. Tonight, Samantha Brown, our Program Manager of Energy Conservation Services and Recycling will help me tag team this particular presentation. Now there's a few slides, no groans, please. We'll try to move through them in a speedy method. Tonight Samantha and I will be presenting an energy savings contract, a project that can save the city approximately $24 million over the course of the next 25 years. As background, the city's general plan and energy conservation action strategy, the ECAS establishes the city's goals in terms of greenhouse gas emission reductions as well as energy conservation at city facilities. To help facilitate those energy conservation programs, the state of California developed Government Code 4217. California Government Code 4217 authorizes public agencies like the city of Vacaville to enter into an energy services contract proposed by an energy services vendor when the anticipated cost of the project, the energy savings, will be less than the anticipated cost of the energy that would otherwise be expended if the project weren't developed. In other words, in terms of the financing, the energy conservation projects implemented via Government Code 4217, these projects are typically typically structured such as the utility savings generated by the project pays for the project. In an effort to advance the city's goals of energy savings, in June of last year, the public works staff released a request for qualifications for an energy savings company to audit the city's facilities and provide a list of potential later savings projects, which could be entered into and through the 4217 government code. The primary focus of that RFQ was to identify a company that could help the city meet its energy savings goals by developing projects to reduce energy consumption at city facilities. Based on the outcome of that RFQ in August of last year, the city council authorized staff to enter into a contract with NG Services U.S. to proceed with an energy savings conservation audit of city facilities. And over the last several months, NG has assessed the city's facilities. They have looked at energy invoices and evaluated energy cost saving opportunities and energy producing systems offering the greatest potential reduce the city's costs and expenditures on utility. Now I'm going to pass it over to Samantha.
Thank you. Based upon the results of the energy savings audit and analysis, NG identified eight city facilities where significant energy utility savings could be achieved through the installation of solar photovoltaic systems. Those eight sites include City Hall, the Corporation Yard, Yulatus Cultural Center, Three Oaks Community Center, the McBride Senior Center, Fire Stations 71 and 75, as well as the Georgie Duke Sports Center at Andrews Park. For the majority of these sites, the PV systems would be installed atop shade canopy structures located in the parking areas at each facility. There are two exceptions to this. Here at City Hall, shade structures would be used in the parking lot as well as a secondary roof mounted system. And at Fire Station 71, there would be only a roof mounted system. We do have renderings available of each site to show what it would look like once the project is constructed. So I'll walk you through some of those. First, we have City Hall. The Corporation Yard. Three Oaks. The McBride Senior Center. Yulatus Community Center. Fire Stations 71 and 75. And the Georgie Duke Sports Center at Andrews Park. Each of the systems will be monitored through a secure web based performance monitoring system. The system allows city staff to access energy consumption and generation data as well as monitor the system for any faults or damage that could impact its operation. What we've got there on the screen is a snapshot of the dashboard, which provides easy at a glance PV production data for each of the sites as well as access to system reports both individually at the site level as well as overall across the city.
Thank you. The project's solar PV shade canopy structures that Samantha just spoke about, they can't be installed with existing trees located below the canopy itself. So therefore this project would require 88 trees to be removed. Those trees consisting primarily of non-native species such as London plane and raywood ash. Working with our community development department and utilizing the city's general plan, tree preservation, land use and development code, we developed a robust tree mitigation plan for those 88 trees. Based on that tree mitigation plan with the NG project, we would infuse a total of over four times the number of trees removed. So a total of 361 trees infused back into the Vacaville community. Those three tree or 361 trees would be infused back into the community in three specific programs. First program would be located at the city park facilities where the project sites are located. So that's Andrews Park, Three Oaks Community Center and Yulatus Cultural Center. At these three sites, a total of 199 trees would be spread across those particular sites. In a second program, as described within the Vacaville downtown specific plan, a specific number, a significant number rather, of trees are either in fair or poor health or the tree has been removed because the the tree had fallen over because of disease or whatnot in storms over the last several years. The downtown specific plan envisions additional trees to be planted to beautify and make the downtown a more walkable, enjoyable environment. This NG project would install a total of 118 trees into the downtown. Finally, the remaining 44 replacement trees are proposed to be included within the city's existing tree bait program and made available to the city of Vacaville residents located exclusively within the city's three disadvantaged community areas. These census tract areas were identified as having higher levels of air quality concerns. And trees have been shown to be instrumental in improving air quality. So residents applicant, resident applicants within the disadvantaged community areas, they would receive up to 80% of the cost of a tree, up to a maximum of $100 per tree, limit two trees per resident applicant.
In addition to the solar PV systems, the project includes the replacement of three of the city's oldest emergency generators. There are two generators located at City Hall and one generator at Fire Station 71. All three of the generators have been identified as being at or beyond their life cycle and are in need of replacement. Previously, city staff has investigated grant funding options to complete the replacement of these generators. However, the replacement of existing equipment is often considered maintenance and it's typically excluded as eligible projects for grant funding. Also included in this project is a partnership with Solano Community College that'll provide workforce development and career exposure opportunities to students interested in pursuing careers in green energy technology. As part of the partnership, paid intern positions will be available where students will be paired with an NG mentor and will be able to gain hands on experience, learning about the design, building and maintenance of energy efficiency and renewable energy projects. Also included is a field trip to the city's project site where students can learn about the tools and technology used to construct energy projects. And you'll provide a guest speaker in a virtual energy expert call series, which helps students connect what they learn in the classroom with career exposure. And finally, teaching resources such as pre and post project data from the city's project as well as consumption data, solar production modeling, canopy designs and financial proformas will be made available and can be used for instructional research, classroom projects or reality based education. All of this is available to Solano Community College students across all of their campus centers, including here in Vacaville, and it's offered at no cost to Solano Community College or its students.
In terms of the project financials, if the city were to do nothing, we did not move forward with this project, we can continue to expect to pay PG&E for our electrical needs at the eight project sites. We would expect to expend approximately $52 million over the next 25 years. Because this project savings meets Federal Inflation Reduction Act qualification, that's the IRA tax credit, the city qualifies for $5.4 million. The overall project cost comes to $33.5 million, making the 25 year cumulative savings to the city of Vacaville almost $24 million. To fund the required $19.5 million project loan amount, tax exempt lease purchase financing is typically the mechanism utilized for projects of these types. A project financing loan solicitation was issued to which the city received financing bids from five financial institutions. The bid that was selected as the most competitive and the best fit for this project and the city of Vacaville was from Bank of America with an interest rate of 4.445% over a 20 year term. Summarizing the project financials in terms of the real benefits to the city of Vacaville, both short term and long term. To implement the project, the required capital outlay is zero, not $1 from the city to move this project forward, which again goes to the point that the savings generated by this project pays for the project. The cumulative savings during the term of the loan, that 20 year term of the loan, the savings that we generate in that term is $7 million. Once we pay the loan off in years 20 to 25, the savings really starts to climb, approximately $17 million in those five years. So over the course of the 25 year term, the city can look to approximately $24 million worth of savings. There are other agreement business points that were negotiated with NG during this process, particularly related to the maintenance and the production guarantee. Terms of maintenance, this contract includes a five year maintenance guarantee, which is included with the agreement. And the city has the discretion after that five years to extend that maintenance up to an additional 10 years. We also negotiated for a production guarantee. NG guarantees through the contract that not less than 90% of the expected energy output from each of the sites will be produced every 12 months. If not, NG will owe the city a production shortfall penalty. And to further help the city's ECAS goals and allowing us to move forward our our green sustainability efforts, this project's environmentals, the attributes including carbon trading credits and renewable energy credits are preserved with the city and stay with us for our debting as well as our reporting to the state. In terms of reference checks, a serious and robust reference checks process was performed on NG and their projects. That analysis included discussions with NG project stakeholders across three project lifecycle timeframes, spanning NG projects of zero to five years old, projects that were six to 10 years old and projects 11 to 15 years old. This deliberate approach allowed staff to investigate the project stakeholders, their experience within NG across a broad range of project owners, project types and project timeframes. Specifically, staff also contacted local stakeholders, which included the county of Solano, city of Sassoon and American Canyon. Staff discovered that all project stakeholders contacted were very happy with their NG project, the financial savings generated and the project implementation process. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Samantha and she's going to speak to the most important aspect of this project, which is the steps taken by the city to verify, to truly verify the NG product data as well as the savings guarantee to the city.
As an additional project assurance measure, in November 2023, city staff issued a request for proposals seeking a qualified third party energy savings project consultant to assist in providing an in-depth review of NG's proposed project. The requested scope of work included a review of our project costs, validation of the utility data, comparison of energy savings estimates to an independent assessment and review the proposed NG agreement and assist the city with negotiating cost and agreement terms. As a result of that RFP, ARC Alternatives was selected as the city's energy savings project consultant. ARC is an independent, third party energy consultant with no technology bias or ties to energy solution providers. Their experience includes working with multiple other municipalities and school districts on similar energy savings projects, including Solano County's project here in town at the William J. Carroll Center. ARC completed an in-depth project analysis that included a review of the proposed PV system site layout and design review, a line item cost analysis and a financial analysis based on current market conditions and comparable projects, verification of electrical rates and future rate escalation assumptions. Additionally, ARC has been instrumental in assisting with the city with contract negotiations and ensuring that the city's interests were protected.
Earlier, I've spoken about Government Code 4217 as the procurement mechanism that the state put in place to allow energy projects such as this to move forward. Based on that project analysis, staff, your public work staff, as well as our community development department staff, they reviewed this project and it qualifies under the Government Code 4217 and is therefore exempt from further SEQA review. The exemption of this project from SEQA is a finding that the city council is being asked to make tonight, and that's referenced in the first resolution of this staff report in this item. So the summary, the project pays for itself. There is zero capital outlay from the city, $24 million in savings, utility savings over the next 25 years. I want to emphasize it again, that's nearly $24 million that we would otherwise be sending from the city in our finite public funds to Pacific Gas and Electric. What we're doing here is we're investing in Vacaville. We're investing in our future and it stays here in Vacaville. We're utilizing $5.4 million of federal IRA tax credits. We have a production guarantee of 90%. This project meets the city's general plan goals and ECAS goals in terms of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and saving energy conservation. It promotes a green revitalization of the downtown through the tree mitigation program and provides green energy workforce development at Solano Community College.
From an environmental benefit perspective, this project will allow the city to avoid an estimated 99.7 million kilowatt hours of PG&E energy generation. That is the equivalent to removing 69,649 metric tons of carbon dioxide over the life of this project. There are a couple of other comparisons available for that figure, such as 16,577 gas powered vehicles driven in one year or the amount of carbon sequestered by 81,318 acres of U.S. forests in one year. In terms of environmental and fiscal impact, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And because the utility savings generated from this project will pay for the 20 year lease purchase financing loan, there are no impacts to the general fund as a result of tonight's action. Additionally, the project will provide short and long term savings to the general fund that would otherwise be expended in electrical utility costs. Strategic goals, number three, protect Vacaville's quality of life and goal number 4A, ensure fiscal sustainability.
Now we're at the recommendation. There are three resolutions to this item. The first one is the finding of the this energy conservation services project is statutorily and categorically exempt from additional environmental review. The second is approving certain energy conservation measures and authorizing the negotiations and executions of an energy services contract with Energy Services U.S., and that's attachment five in your staff report. Finally, authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement with respect to the acquisition financing and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required connection therewith and authorizing the taking of all actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by that resolution. And that is in related to the bank financing documents, which is attachment eight, attachment nine. That concludes our presentation. We do have representatives from NG as well as ARC Alternatives in the audience and we'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Presentation and all the research to get to this point, anyone who's worked with trying to lower their costs, sometimes what seems like a no brainer, you want to actually ask for a consultant. So that consultant, if I understand it right, completely separate RFP so that there's absolutely no correlation and our own assessment. absolutely no correlation, and our own assessment is that there was no correlation, correct?
That's absolutely correct. Trust but verify.
In the production, can't read my writing here, the production penalty, if it doesn't reach the 90%, what is that penalty?
So there's a calculation, that is a very simple calculation, that, working again with ARC, and then negotiating that calculation into the agreement, the monitoring and verification portion of the contract. It allows the city to be able to take information related to what we actually see on the meter as opposed to what the expectation was, and run a simple calculation to understand what that value is on the 90% threshold. So it's very simple in terms of being able to walk through it, whether we picked it up a year from now or 10 years from now, to be able to understand what that calculation is and what the penalty would be.
And my last question is, is the extended maintenance option, clearly the first five years, at some point, if you don't do it, then you don't get to go back and do it. So hopefully, part of our process, if approved tonight, is to ensure that we look at the viability. Would that entail looking at other projects to determine what the return of investment would be, on how much the maintenance cost would be, or how do you envision that?
The way that we envision it here is setting up a process within the department where we are ensuring that we're monitoring this on a monthly basis, that we're looking forward to when that five years runs out. My anticipation would be that the city would recommend, that I would recommend, you know, the future head of the department would recommend to the city manager and council to continue that maintenance agreement for the next 10 years. I believe that it would keep, it keeps the project honest, it keeps the maintenance in terms of the potential energy production from the system at the highest level, and ensures that we get the maximum level that we can in terms of that energy savings, long-term.
Thank you. Jason, Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad this has finally come to us, because I've been bugging you guys for about three and a half years for this. I know it takes time. Yeah, I'm excited for this. I think it'll save a lot of money, open up funds for projects that we wouldn't otherwise have money for. One of my questions is, does this include, as we continue to electrify, like the fleet, because I know the buses, in about 10 years, premature vehicles are going to be electric, and so does that include those projections for, yeah, electric vehicles on the fleet? Because I know when I switch over EV, my electric bill went a little bit higher, granted it's offset by what I was spending on gas, so.
That's a great question. And we have, in certain circumstances, where the location allowed for the expansion of, the full expansion of the number of panels, to be able to reach more than the 100% level in terms of the generation, to count for a couple things, that PG&E's rates continue to climb, and that we have, you know, some future transition to the electric and going to EV charging. I would anticipate, you know, long-term, that as chargers come in, we will go through the process of reevaluating what that impact is. But the bare bones of this, you know, the project itself, the energy savings at all of eight of these facilities is enormous. That is a tremendous number in terms of that $52 million that would otherwise, we would be spending over the next 25 years and sending that down to San Francisco to Pacific Gas and Electric.
Yeah. One of the things is probably more on the finance side of things, but would there be a possibility, it doesn't have to be like any times, you just later down the road, again, a projection of like, what it'd be if we put all the saved funds towards principal and see how much savings we'd have at that point? Because like a mortgage, if you can pay down the principal as quick as possible, you save tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands here, in this case, probably tens of millions of dollars in interest alone.
I would, for that question, I would ask that our director of finance, Ken Mansamia, answer that question. I know Ken and his team have been very good in helping us over the last several weeks in meeting our, designing a simply a loan that meets our needs.
Good evening, council. Yes, so to answer that question, there is a prepayment option in there, but it is, it involves the tax credit. And so if the $5 million tax credit that was referenced in there, we're allowed to prepay that, there's going to be a 1% premium that we're paying with it. But, you know, we can't take any sort of savings and prepay everything off in total when then, within that 20 years. The only thing that we're allowed to do is prepay that tax credit up to $5 million.
Okay, so you can't necessarily prepay it. So is that $33 million the total for the project, including the overall life alone, including all the interest and everything?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's all the questions I had. Again, I appreciate it. Yeah, I've been bugging you guys for a long time about this, so I'm glad to finally see it come together.
Councilmember Silva.
I have some questions and I have some comments after publics from the comment, and I'll keep them as brief as possible. But just, so I'll just list off the couple. When's the project completion date expected? That's question number one. Just to clarify, the city's own all the infrastructure and panels, outright, at the completion of the 25 years. And then, can you elaborate a little bit more between the effort of this project, revenue generation versus energy savings?
Great questions. The project is slated for an 18-month turnaround, so if council considers and authorizes this project, we will start working on it tomorrow. And we have an 18-month turnaround time in terms of getting it up and going and getting it commissioned. We're on a shot clock. If you remember last April, March, Public Works came to council, and we put in applications with PG&E, which basically, for the facilities, which started the clock. We have three years to be able to get these systems in and get them commissioned, so that we can take advantage of that NIM 2.0 system, which provides us the highest level of benefit. So 18 months, we're all very much excited to be able to move this project along. Terms of panel life in the Department of Energy, the panels that we're getting for this project are rated somewhere around 25 years. That's what the expected lifespan of the panels are. The Department of Energy typically slates that solar panels are anywhere between 30 and 35 years. So if you average it out, if you look at, you know, a potential of 30 years for solar panel life, talking about 10 additional years beyond, after paying the loan, that we're totally reaping that benefit. Now, panels do have a degradation period over time, and so that'll all be monitored through the website, and we'll be able to track that over time. Just the beauty about this is that in 25 years, I fully expect that panels will be more efficient, they'll be lighter, and they will be cheaper. And the beauty about moving this project forward today is we are putting that infrastructure in place, the hard stuff, the transformers, the underground, the cabling, the wiring, the shade canopies themselves, all the structure will be there, so that someday in the future we'll be able to scrape those panels off, put new ones on, and still be able to reap the benefit of this system long into the future. In terms of energy savings versus revenue generation, this is an energy savings project. We're looking at primarily at reducing the cost of our utility to Pacific Gas and Electric. On the revenue generation side of it, that's really a, right now, as I understand it, is being looked at through the LNT project. So those consultants are looking at revenue generation as well as microgrids and BES and other various parameters, in more of a comprehensive energy aspect for the city. I believe that's forthcoming later this year, in the fall.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thank you for the information. I truly appreciate having it going forward as well, because, if we vote on it, because it is the direction that the city needs to move. I have a couple of questions, too. On the staff report, there was one of the charts that called out Andrews Park and the art gallery, but that was, there was only on one. So I know that there were two spaces on Andrews Park. Is part of it the art gallery or not necessarily?
It's a great question. It's the parking lot, because the city owns the art gallery and the parking lot. And so we couldn't get the size that we needed for that site in one panel configuration. So we ended up having to break it apart. There's the piece that's, you know, right next to Andrew Park, and then there's the solar canopy system that's over the parking lot at the art gallery. They're both connected, and they go to the Duke Center, and so that's the meter that we're offsetting.
Okay. And then you mentioned that the tree mitigation is required, because you can't have trees under the canopy, which that totally makes sense. Over 25 years, are there going to be a lot of other trees that will need to be taken out? I'm not in the middle of the parking lot, but like, are there some in the periphery of some of these things, like around McBride Center or Andrews Park, that will impact us over the 25 years?
That's another great question. So they, NG went through a modeling process where they looked at, you know, it's kind of colloquially unknown that the solar panel facing south is what you want in this hemisphere, allows for the maximum amount of energy production. They ran their, the sites, each of the sites went through a model, and looking at the perspective of the time of day and the maximum amount, the trees, the buildings, the shadows, all of that was input into the model to allow for the best possible fit of the site. Over time, trees grow. We'll end up having to watch them. More often than not, though, at the sites that we've selected, the trees are, the ones that, other than the ones that we have to, had to remove for the project, the other trees are way outside the spectrum that would interfere with the canopy system.
And I also had a timeline question. You answered the first one, but will the generators take place, I mean, get those early in, because it's just a replacement, or?
That's another great question. The project will go forward simultaneously with the solar system as well as the generators. On that piece of it, it's a lot easier, because we're simply taking out the existing generator and putting down a new one. Same configuration in the same footprint, essentially, as those current generators are located.
And then we're talking about NG, so is NG the one that's going to be installing it and building the structures and doing all that?
It will be their team.
So will they do it like one parking lot, then another, then another, or do you have any idea how that's going to work?
When we get to, so then, another great question. When we get down to the specifics in terms of the calendaring, the scheduling of that particular work, there's going to be a little bit there. We'll end up working with the department heads for the various locations to mitigate any impact to parks and rec, or to City Hall facilities, or any of the parks themselves. So we'll end up going through a scheduling process, so that we mitigate any of those conflicting timeframes, but maximize the amount of work that can be done in the shortest amount of time.
All right, and then just the last question. The bird protection, or keeping birds out of that, you know, that was one of the exclusions in their thing. And, you know, when we talked before, you said they're going to be high enough, so do we, do we think that it won't be an issue? Because when I talk to homeowners who've had solar, you know, because now that's what the state says you have to have, they've said that birds and other pests are an issue on the roof.
We've got some terrific facility staff. We've actually went through this conversation. They're telling me that it shouldn't be a problem, that, you know, they're up on the roof here at City Hall in particular quite often, and repairing and preventing maintenance on the HVAC systems. And so I think there's enough activity with our staff up there and with the height of the panel itself, because they're not, they're not low, they're actually on risers to be able to get over the various tubing and piping and everything else that's on top of the roof. I honestly don't think it's going to be an issue. Facility staff has been aware of it, and so we will work with NG when we get this thing up and going, and we'll keep an eye on it to ensure that we don't have any of those, you know, unfortunate accidents or issues with birds or other animals.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I have a few questions. U-Lattice, the property between, on the slide, that land is beside the library and that senior citizen, that whole, that whole plot of land will be taken up with this?
We can pull that slide up here real quick.
You have a beautiful picture of nothing but solar panels on that plot of land.
There we go. All right. So we are look, oop, okay. The site itself at U-Lattice, the ring, essentially, there's, in the parking lot, there's the rings of parking areas. The solar system, the canopy systems are going to be essentially, you know, mounted within those particular rings. The land that you're talking about to the east, that is the property, too. There's nothing going to be going on there. That's actually a detention basin. That's located on the east side of that particular property, east of the library itself.
Oh, okay. I'm thankful of that. I was concerned. You were, yeah, okay.
Just on, just on the sites that you see here, on the property itself.
The parking lot.
In the parking lot.
That's great. I like that. That's wonderful. Okay. The other question, the maintenance agreement, beginning, starting out as a five-year, and then you're going to renew. Or, now, my question is, for the entire timeframe period, for that entire period, you're going to have to renew four times?
So NG will all?
Let me finish the question.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're going to have to renew at least four times. Okay. Has that already been computed into the ROI, the return on investment?
The first five years has. So the first five years has been included in the contract. The second piece, up to an additional 10 years, we can only get 15 years in of the maintenance with NG. After that 15 years, if we want to have a company come in, we would probably do a solicitation and have that vendor come in to do the maintenance on the system. The additional 10 years is not part of this contract. That'll be something that, when we get through this first five years, we'll go through the process of having those discussions with NG as to what it would cost to extend for another five years, or the full amount up to the 10 years, which would give us the total 15.
How much is the first five years of maintenance? What's that figure?
It's included within the contract.
I know, but what about, what is it going to be?
I don't have that number on me.
Don't worry.
Is it a warranty?
Hold on a second.
I mean, is it like a, do we pay for it, or is it a warranty?
I stand corrected. It's better than I thought. The maintenance is factored into the pro forma. So we are, we are good for the first, for the 25 years.
Oh, good. That's good. That's what you want?
I stand corrected.
Okay. And I know no one would like this question, but I'm going to put it out there. What happens in the event that NG should go belly up, that they should go bankrupt? Who, who will absorb the, or who will take over? What happens?
That is a good question, and one that Samantha and I, from the very outset, discussed with ARC, with Solano County, and with some of the other project stakeholders that NG has projects with, particularly so because you see a lot of that movement in the industry on the home-based residential side. There's a lot of turnover in terms of those solar companies. What I can tell you about NG is they've been at this now for 50 years, 49 years and going. They have projects all over the state. I think they're, you know, from our perspective and from talking to the project stakeholders who are at the furthest amount in terms of the project lifecycle, so that 11 to 15 years that we looked at, still going. NG is still strong in terms of the support of their product and their systems. So at this point, I don't have any concern about that. We would have to work with city legal if that were to happen sometime in the future or at all.
Right. Thank you.
And Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, sorry, just another question. For the solar systems that will be roof-mounted, how much prerequisite work is going to have to be done to put those in? Because you don't want to put brand-new panels on a roof that's going to need to be replaced in like five years.
So those roofs were evaluated. Our facilities teams went out there and took a look at them. There's plenty of life left in the asphalt shingle tiles, as well as the roof here. The city's roof was recently re-roofed, essentially, within the last five years or so. And then the fire stations, at Fire Station 71, we've also done that within the last six or seven years. So they essentially have new roofs, good for 30 to 35-year roofs.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to open up to the public now for any comments.
I'm going to open up to the public now for any comments. Seena, I will bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion or comments?
Comment.
Okay. Councilmember Silver.
All right, so I know this has been a long time coming, and NG, seeing you out and about for quite some time. So to me, this is an example of where we can form partnerships as a city, where city staff works with different, different agencies to help address the strategic goals in a positive way and a positive outcome. So personally, I want to extend my, my thanks to the NG team working with all our city staff. And in that sense, you know, Brian, I told you just earlier today, Samantha, I'm going to include you in this because I know it's not always done alone, and I can throw a bone out to Ken, that, no, that your guys' leadership to advocate for how we best serve our community and address the different needs, you know, throughout different challenges and going above and beyond out of the way. So even like including ARC, a third-party consultant, to make sure that we're covering all our bases to get the best outcome for our residents. You know, to me, that speaks to a huge, tremendous amount of leadership. That exemplifies leadership in the sense of the trust that we bestowed in all of you through, of course, our city manager and city attorney. So I just want to truly extend, I'm really just impressed on the leadership that you guys continue to bring and how you serve us. To me, this isn't like, you know, a council project or not, although, you know, yeah, we advocate and do that, this and that, but you guys are the ones who drive it, right? You guys are the drive the work and something else like staying like, I want you all, not just these projects or other projects, you know, when you go home to your family and, you know, your kids and, hey, where'd hex dad? Where's mom? You know, where's, whomever you have at home, that, you know, you can point to, hey, this, you know, look at that, like I was a part of that project. You know, I do that for my grandfather. He worked on a trans-American building. My grandpa had a hard head, not just a hard hat, but like a hard head. Got a lot, had a lot of issues, but I'm really proud of that, that guy. And, you know, just seeing, when I look at things, I think about the contributions that he's made, you know, in big cities like San Francisco and even small projects even here locally. So I just want to make sure you guys know that that's deeply appreciated. And I hope that your families are also proud of these because this is something I think is much needed. The cost savings is huge over time. The one thing I wanted to comment on, actually, I'll bring it up another time, but the tree rebate program, it wasn't quite elaborated here, but it's in the attachment. That one is, want to make sure folks know, there's three different census tracts that have been identified that are more prone to health disparities related to asthma. And so part of the tree rebate program is to reimburse, reimburse up to two trees, $100 each, to put in those particular areas to hopefully help out those residents. We also have, aside from this, another tree rebate program for all residents to where you can get reimbursed up to 50 bucks for a tree that you put on your lot. And this is for homeowners and how we move forward. And I think there's a lot of benefits to that as well. So really excited. Thank you all for the time and commitment in this.
Councilmember Wiley?
I'm ready to make the motion if we're ready for it.
Go for it.
I move that we accept all three resolutions and go forward with this project.
Second. So you have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't think so? Get to work.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Thank you.
Samantha, I tried to.
Mr. City Manager, what do we have next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. As our budget team comes down to make the presentation tonight, this is, it's that time of year again when your staff has been working diligently on the upcoming fiscal year budget. Tonight, we're going to present to you the first of three study sessions on this particular subject. Tonight, we'll start with discussion on Measure M, as we've done in years past. So tonight, we actually have kind of a two-part presentation for the council's discussion tonight. The first part that Ken and his budget team will go over is a summary or of our fiscal forecast. And then followed by that, we'll get into an overview of some Measure M projects that the council has been discussing for over a year or so now. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ken and his team.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Next slide, please. And so as the city manager mentioned, tonight is a two-parter. And so the very, the two, the first two bullet points, the general fund forecast recap and the preview of the upcoming fiscal year '24, '25 budget decisions, is that first part where we're seeking direction from the council this evening on, related to the '24, '25 budget, how we balance the budget. And it kind of goes back to that conversation we were having at mid-year with the forecasts, where we are projecting that expenses are going to exceed revenues in the upcoming year. And so we'll be seeking direction on the use of excess reserves for that first part. And with the second part involving prioritizing projects and seeking council's input on potentially reallocation, reallocating about $8.4 million in Measure M dollars to another project or projects that council considers a priority. Next slide, please. So starting off with the forecast recap, this is related to the major budget update that we did back in February. The chart that you're seeing on the right is our forecast that was presented that evening with the annual surplus or deficit. And what that means is our forecast or assumption on revenues and expenses in the upcoming years and kind of where we've been in prior years. So in fiscal year 20, 21, 22, you'll see that our revenues, our general fund revenues exceeded our surplus by about $7 million in 20, in 21 and 22, you're seeing double-digit surpluses there. And then you see in fiscal year '23, which is the prior fiscal year, where you do see that amount come down. And the big part of that, or the main reason for that, is really to remember kind of the timeframe that we were in. This is the period of COVID. And so really, when we were doing the budgets back in fiscal year '20, going into '21, not knowing what the impact of the pandemic would be, we did budget very conservatively. I think like a lot of other agencies, we kind of pulled back on things such as infrastructure funding, opposition funding, things of that nature, not knowing sort of how that was going to play out. And although the pandemics kind of affected everybody differently with cities, what we did see is that, you know, with sales tax, sales tax took off during the pandemic because a lot of people, although they weren't maybe shopping at brick-and-mortar stores, they were doing a lot of online shopping. And so we did see substantial kind of revenue growth during that period of time where revenues were going up about 7% a year. That has kind of changed going forward on the revenue side, and that's kind of driving sort of why we are forecasting that revenues are going to be under our expenses because although we were seeing that tremendous sales tax growth during the pandemic and kind of up until this point, we are realizing, we've been talking about inflation for a while. Inflation has definitely played a part, and we are seeing where with sales tax primarily that the increase every year, we're not getting that bump that we typically see. And so when we did the mid-year budget forecast, usually when we do that every year, we come to council, we say that we've kind of forecasted sales tax of this amount going into the fiscal year, then we have the mid-year budget update, and then we come to council and say, well, that, we're expecting that number to actually be better than what we projected. That didn't happen this year. And, you know, we do work with HGL and outside consultant on our sales tax forecasts, and they are projecting kind of this year to finish below last year and then for next year to be flat. And so although you do kind of have growth in the outside years, they're not projecting the kind of growth that we've seen up until this point. And that's really kind of where you're seeing the impact on the revenue side. And then on the expense side, although the revenues are kind of slowing down, on the expense side, you're not really seeing that slowdown. You think this is a great tie-in to the previous item, but with indirect costs, that really has to do with, you know, kind of the amounts that we are paying to PG&E. Those numbers are jumping from year to year. And so with the mid-year budget forecast, we didn't project sort of the savings from NG contract, but that is something that definitely is increasing every year. Other factors are liability insurance, those premiums are going up, inflation, and then our pension and OPEP costs are also increasing as well. And so you're kind of having this combination where increases are going up, the expenses are going up, and the revenues are trailing behind, and that's why that gap exists. And so one thing to keep in mind with the forecast is that this doesn't, since it was for mid-year, this doesn't include any of the budget augmentations that we'll be talking about with council in the upcoming budget study sessions. And so these are things such as the annual kind of department requests that are part of the budget study session, upcoming labor negotiations. Next year, we do have our labor negotiation, our MOUs expiring with a majority of the groups. And so this is not going to project, have that built into it, as well as other future needs such as fleet replacements. So this is kind of where everything stood as of mid-year in that forecast. Next slide, please. And so the previous slide talked about sort of our projection of our surplus or deficits, revenues and expenses. This is where our reserve is at. And so as of mid-year, when we did this projection, we are projecting that at the end of this current fiscal year, that we would be around 50 million or 38% reserve. That's an important number to keep in mind because our general fund reserve policy is 16 to 25%. And so although we are projecting for the upcoming fiscal years to have that kind of structural imbalance where expenses are higher than revenues, you know, compared to a lot of other cities, we, the councils did a tremendous job of building a reserve for these types of economic concerning, those types of situations. And so when we did this, this forecast with the major update, we were assuming that over the next several years, as you can see, that we would have a general fund reserve despite that deficit spending, you know, really at that top end of our reserve policy at around 25%. The forecast does assume that with the ADP payments, and so these are the kind of the extra mortgage payments, if you will, towards our unfunded liabilities to save all those interest costs, this is assumed that we kind of stop that if we are truly going to deficit spending. And I would say another thing to keep in mind with the forecast is that this assumes that you don't change anything. And so I think in reality, if the city were actually to go into deficit spending over a longer period of time, or if we were truly seeing that, then that would be where as staff we would recommend changes. But with the forecast, it pretty much is kind of assuming if you don't do anything, this is how this could potentially go. Next slide, please. And so as I had mentioned with this first part, what we are seeking direction from council on is the use of those excess general fund reserves to balance the budget, if you will, temporarily balancing in the upcoming year. And so as I had mentioned, Ken, in the introduction, that we do have our budget study sessions coming up. The next council meeting is going to be our study session number one, which is primarily where we present to the council the draft budget numbers, also the department asks. And then that second study session that occurs in June, on June 11th, is where we have our department presentations. And so although we are expecting expenses or ongoing expenses to exceed revenues, as I've shown in that forecast, we do expect that reserve to end this year at that 35%, 40% level, so above our general fund policy levels. And so the direction we're seeking this evening, there are two options being presented. Option number one, which is our recommendation, is that given where our reserves are at, that we use the excess reserves to balance the budget in the upcoming fiscal year temporarily, and that if revenues do not increase and they actually go in line with the forecast, that that funding gap would be addressed as part of the fiscal year '25, '26 budget. And so really, the thought process being there is that with council being diligent about building reserve, it does allow us to, allow us time to kind of further monitor our revenue trends and to take a strategic approach and kind of not just make cuts. Option number two would be to not use the reserve to balance the budget for next year. And so despite that reserve, kind of this option would be that we're reducing the proposed budget in the upcoming year so that ongoing revenues and ongoing expenses are in line.
Thank you for the presentation up to this point. What I like to do from the council is just get an understanding where, where we are as a council based upon our reserves and the presentation that, at least thus far, so that it gives Ken and your team an understanding where we go from here. So that's what's in front of us. Comments from the council? Councilmember Stockton?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation this far. I, I think that I'm very thankful for the council's fiscal responsibility to have this money, you know, in case of emergency break glass, kind of opportunity. And I think, as, as I look at what we have here, I think option one makes the most sense. I think we can continue to reassess things as, as time goes by and we're able to evaluate the economy and, you know, any sort of trends that may change. But I think that right now, I think that the reserve is healthy enough to sustain moving forward with using the excess reserves to balance the budget. That's what I would be in favor of.
Councilmember Chapman?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I'm, my position is in support of option one as well. I would not want to infringe or do anything to hinder the services that we're providing, which option two would cause a reduction, I believe, in, in the services we're providing to our residents. With the, have the reserve that we have, we know that we need to bring it down a little. So I'm, I'm in favor of option one.
Councilmember Roberts? All right. Got you.
Thank you. Just kind of echo what the previous council member said. It's, yeah, we're lucky to have that reserve there, and so I'd like to use that to potentially save any further pain later on. I'd rather pull from that now if it'll help out from further issues down the road. Yeah, we do that personal finances, so might as well do it here as well. And then kind of along this, I assume you guys are always doing it anyways. It's like assessing the city's like expenditures and making sure everything's, any excess stuff that doesn't need to be there, you're auditing it and trying to find savings that way. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ritchie?
I'd like to echo what my council member said. Sorry, my voice. I'm all for number one, and it's one of the things where I do not want to lower the level of service. I think the residents of Vacaville, they expect certain things from the city, the landline district, our public works, the way they keep the city clean, public safety, the way, everything about Vacaville, they expect that. And I wouldn't want to, at the cost of that, reduce the budget to match revenues and expenses at the cost of people that make the city amazing, that serve the city, to make the residents feel safe and just everything that they do. You know, I have a lot of faith in you. I mean, deficit spending is a word we're going to learn pretty soon, and I think the way option one's set up is going to be okay. We're going to see some, some adjustments '24, '25, and I think we will come back in line. We're seeing just the green shoots of the economy and inflation. It's starting to get where needs to be so Jerome Powell can do his job. I think it's going to have a very effect, and I think we might have just made three or four quarters of issues, and hopefully that we'll be positioned for '25, '26 to get back on track. So I think I have a lot of faith in you and your team, and I think planning ahead and being prudent is really smart instead of just reducing the budget and hoping and praying. It's not a good strategy.
Councilmember Silver?
I'm fine with option one. I just have a quick question for city manager, well, city attorney as well. So we've added a lot of positions the last couple of years to bring more value and be more responsive in our, in our strategic goals and values as a city, kind of stemming off of council member Roberts' comments. Can you elaborate just relatively briefly on the mechanisms that are in place to evaluate productivity and effectiveness of, of the teams?
I'll take a shot at that. Thank you. So each year's, well, for the past four budget cycles that I've been a part of, you know, we've gone to the departments to evaluate their needs and through the budget augmentation request process. Each year, we've been very purposeful about, you know, our requests to make sure that we're not just asking for the sake of asking, but we're wanting to make sure that we're addressing needs that have been there for a while or forecasting the needs that we see coming with new legislation, new programs, new services, and so forth. And there's been a lot of both of those. For example, you know, we've been growing as a city. We've been adding miles and miles and miles of sidewalks and streets, but the size of our public work staffing responsible for the repair and maintenance of those facilities stay the same as our, you know, 1990, you know, staffing numbers. And so, you know, we've been very thoughtful and strategic about a request up to this point. We will continue to be so. But to specifically to your point about how do we measure, we are doing that as part of, you know, data, you know, and it depends on the positions, obviously. Some are more administrative in nature and it's just keeping up with the volumes of workload that come through. But certainly things like public safety, public works, you know, you can see the productivity and being able to keep up with the service demands as well as the number of work orders and so forth. And it's clear that these positions were needed and have been very advantageous for us to keep up and provide the levels of service, you know, for our community. And you'll see that again this year, especially given the direction that you've just provided us with, you know, moving forward into the reserves for operating budget and augmentations. And as I said, we'll have more conversations on that at future study sessions at your next couple of meetings. But that is something that is under my responsibility, and I work very closely with our budget team to make sure that, and all the department heads for that matter, to make sure that we're getting the most value that we can out of the requests that you approved in the past.
I guess I would just echo what the...
I guess I would just echo what the, excuse me, what the city manager said. I mean, I think all the departments have different ways of tracking the productivity of their different departments, depending on their different tasks and services that they provide. You know, but we're very mindful of of the productivity and of the value added and making requests based on the need, those needs.
Thank you.
That's member Wiley.
I appreciate getting the information, and I also appreciate having the healthy reserve that we do. And the reason we have it is to use it when needed. So I'm in favor of option one, and I'm happy that it says, if things continue in the current path, we will look at the budget in 25, 26. It's not just we'll drain the reserve and then see what happens. So I'm in favor of option one and looking at things as we go.
And I'll just add my my comments as well. I can recall being on staff when you start looking at the slope, it's a downward spiral and what that looks like. And so there's been a lot of investment in prior years on having a policy for how a reserve works and ongoing feedback to to the councils, including us, in the future so that there should be no mystery. You're always projecting, so continue with those projections. Thank you. You can continue.
Great. Thanks for the direction on that. So we'll move into the the second part. The second part of the presentation before I hand it back to the city manager is kind of investing in these future projects. And so kind of as mentioned on this slide, there are going to be several large projects that are going to be presenting that the city's looking to fund. And then although we're projecting deficit spending in the forecast, it is always important to balance the immediate needs with long term goals of the council. And so with the projects, you'll notice from the price tag that there isn't current funding for that. But then to the extent that we're able to, the council's able to provide their input on what is the priority, then as funding comes available or revenues improve, then we'll know sort of where to spend our resources and what to focus on. Next slide, please. So prior to this, that discussion, springing up this reallocation in Measure M. And so there is about $8.4 million in two projects that the background of it is that when Measure M was extended back in 2018, and then when the budget was being worked on for fiscal year 19, so we're talking about six years ago, that there were, with Measure M funding that was being extended, there were ongoing positions that were identified to be funded out of Measure M as well as one time projects as well. And so while several of those projects have, you know, since been completed or currently active, there are these two projects where funding was put aside in fiscal year 19 and the fiscal year 20. And then as costs have escalated, and then also as other projects were identified as priorities, these these projects have sat, and then that funding has sat in these projects as well. And so we are putting this out there for council consideration that this funding could be reallocated towards projects that are discussed this evening or to be used for any underfunded CIP projects that will be part of the fiscal year 24, 25 budget study sessions. And then with that, I will pass it to the city manager.
Thank you, Ken. So actually, if you can go back, John, sorry. So before I get into the specific projects, I just wanted to kind of touch on why are we doing this now? You know, because in prior budget years, we kind of gave you an overview of Measure M, but we didn't really talk about specific projects. Last year, at your goal setting session, you know, about the same time, we had presented the council with, you know, some opportunities that are out there based on the feedback that we have gotten from council members about investments in our community to address a lot of the different elements that were included in your strategic plan. And so with that said, what we figured we do tonight is is really give the council an opportunity to take what we see as $8.4 million that, while one of the projects that you see on there, I don't think, you know, is a reality. The second one related to Station 72, that is in fact actually part of the discussion here. But this is money that's sitting there. And because of the forecast that, you know, we're sharing with you again tonight, and really going to the kind of along the same lines as the question that council member Silva raised, you know, how are we tracking this and what are we doing? Well, I want to make sure that we're giving this council an opportunity to look at the the resources you have available to you so that we can manage those resources as well as honestly manage council's expectations for how those resources are being applied. We have a lot of different projects. They're all very valuable in their own unique way. But the fact of the matter is, is that the checkbook doesn't have enough money to cover all those projects. And so what we're hoping to do tonight is just start the dialogue of where would the council like to put this $8.4 million, if anywhere in particular at all? But tonight's really the purpose of starting that dialogue. So with that said, I'll quickly go through some of the projects in no particular order, except they might be in order of cost. So with that, John, if you can go to the next slide.
Hey, could you hold on?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Can you tell me what the grass field project complex? What is that? That's before my time. I'm sorry.
It is. It was it was an idea that was suggested at one point to see if there was an opportunity here to capitalize on the sports tourism enterprise or business. We had explored the possibility of doing 12 all weather fields out on our city owned property east of Easterly down there. And the consensus was at that time, which is probably four plus years ago now, that it would be about $120 million to do something like that. And then there wasn't any guarantee or certainty that it would produce revenue to provide for the ongoing cost to operate and maintain said facility. So there, you know, it was it was an interesting idea, but I don't know that it's something that is currently feasible. And so that's that's what that was.
Thank you.
All right. But the first project of discussion is kind of related along those lines. And this is a new multipurpose recreation center. This is something that comes from the fairly recently adopted Parks and Rec master plan. This was a facility that was not only identified by the community as a top need and priority for our our city residents, but it was something that was also agreed upon and voted by the city's Parks and Recreation Department as their recommended top priority for facilities within the community. And then when that was then forwarded to the city council, you too also saw this as the number one recreation amenity for all that it provides. And here's just a quick summary. It's still in the design stage, anywhere between 50 to 70,000. The one thing that we know for certain is is that it would be located in Centennial Park. And as you can see, there are a variety of different uses and programming elements that would be included there, ranging from multi use courts such as basketball, volleyball, and pickleball, fitness area, office spaces, gymnasium, multipurpose rooms, and an indoor track. Next slide, please. This is just some quick overview, and again, these are in $2,019. All proposed phases are ranging in cost from anywhere from 40 to 60 million. We do have a, you know, that's still a pretty good estimate at this time, to a certain degree, based on some costs that we've seen using the recent data from the recently completed Elgro facility that they did. But as you can see, not only does it cost, you know, a few dollars to to construct it, but there's still ongoing costs to operate and maintain. But for the most part, it looks like these estimates that it would be revenue neutral because of the offsetting revenues that would be collected for programming. Next slide, please. The second project, again, this was kind of touched on earlier a little bit, but at the time that it was first settled on by prior councils, it was the potential relocation of Station 72 to the Ullatus Drive property that was mentioned earlier as part of the NG project. Right now, we're also exploring the possibility of doing a vertical expansion on the existing property to capitalize on existing resources and minimize the debt that would be incurred with that. One of the things that, you know, why is this necessary? And one of the things that we're doing that we presented to council last year is an update of the department's standards of coverage report. Typically, that's done every five years, and we were in need. And so the chief with council's approval earlier this year has been working on that study, which we hope to be able to bring back to the council in July or August of this year. But the need for that expansion or relocation, whatever, you know, comes from that report and council's discussion ultimately is, is that that area east of Leisure Town that's growing, we need additional services to meet service times that are, you know, required for for service out there. And more importantly, we received an award tonight for our biotech efforts and advanced manufacturing efforts. Well, the location of those land uses is in very close proximity to Station 72. And so that's where we anticipate, or we already have a very good idea that the truck company would need to be relocated from Station 74 to Station 72. And as a result of that station house function changing and increasing, the the station house would need to grow with it. So that's what's prompting this. Estimated cost at this point in time is around 20 million, and it will take about two to three years to get through that process. Next slide. Here's another one that came up.
Can you back up for just a second?
Yes, sir.
So expansion or relocation, so is it 20 million for relocation?
Expansion.
Or expansion? Okay.
All right, thank you. So next slide. This is something that came up at the goal setting session, and this is related to flood control. We have been actively looking at different alternatives for a variety of of options for several years now. To their credit, Brian and the public works team have identified an initial phase of of flood control relief efforts. It does not solve the entirety of our need, but the first phase that we're looking at is the expansion of the Rancho Lagunitas detention basin, which would increase the stormwater storage by sevenfold. This goes a long way to taking nearly, I think the number is 478 homes out of the 100 year flood plain. So no small number, obviously. And so the cost with this particular project is estimated to be about $8 million. Brian is also pursuing recovering a grant that we had earlier with our efforts in the amount of 3 million. And the preliminary word is is that they are interested because of the work that is being suggested for this particular project. So if this was something that was council's objective, they would start the project and complete in the fall of 2027. Next slide, please. This is a kind of a new one, but it did, while it didn't come up in the goal setting session, this did come up last year when staff was being proactive about this whole subject of Safe Route Schools. Just real quickly, you know, the the Safe Route Schools is typically something that's funded through other agencies such as MTC and STA that control all the traffic dollars and so forth. And so what we had done is prepared a a action plan, if you will, proactive action plan to go out and involve the community, involve the school districts to get their input about, you know, needed improvements around all of our 20 schools so that we would be able to put game plans together in advance of the funding so that because it's such competitive funding, the fact that if we were able to have design plans in in place, we would be first in line to to get, you know, some money to to make these improvements. Following that presentation, council, you know, mentioned that why why wait? Because we're talking about, you know, childhood safety around our schools and how important that is, and which staff certainly agrees. But now that we've gone ahead and put all those plans together, that particular project for all 20 schools is $16 million. And here again, that is something that is not currently in our in our budgets. So that is something for council's consideration. Next slide, please. Brown Street Park and Community Center. This is an item that we presented to you at your last meeting. This is a potential wonderful neighborhood amenity for for the Brown Street area. It started several years ago as a as a project that was going to be kind of a catalyst project, if you will, for the neighborhood. We were successful in getting a grant back in 2019, I believe it was, for 6.7 million. Unfortunately, that was our preliminary estimate for the the costs for all the improvements that you see on this conceptual plan here. But unfortunately, as we shared with you at the last meeting, the project costs have greatly, you know, swelled to the cost of 18.1 million. So that leaves a funding gap of 11.4 million. But to the credit of our Housing and Community Services Department and their director, we've identified some potential other alternative funding sources by using our CDBG grant entitlement grant process where we could shave off potentially, if we were to get a loan, of about 3.4 million. And then finally, some old RDA bond proceeds in the just under 800,000, which would bring the the total gap to down to 7.2 million. So that is another option. Now, I will stop here for a second and and mention that the one unique thing about this particular project is is that this is the one project that has, I'll call it a shot clock associated with it, because that 6.7 million that we received from the state does have a performance deadline of 2027. So it's essentially use it or lose it, and that is something for the council's consideration. Next slide, please. This is one that I that we decided to put in here because it is a direction from the council earlier this year. I will just be candid and say that this is something that unless told otherwise, you'll be seeing again in your budget augmentation requests in future budget discussions. But this is related to the two plans that we presented earlier this year in our urban reserve area when the council said that you would like us to move forward with the processing of a specific plan and the necessary environmental impact work to be done on the east of Leisure Town Road Growth Area, which is the highlighted area on the lower part of this graphic. We are actively moving forward with the Property Owners and Developers Group, who are committed to providing 100% funding for that particular specific plan and environmental work. That's not the case with the Northeast Growth Area, which is the the area in colored up in the upper corner of this particular graphic. This is an area that we presented to the council, and I appreciate the council's vision on this area, that this area has real potential opportunity for continued growth related to our bio and advanced manufacturing efforts. Because, you know, it's it's going to take a while to plan for this, but we have a lot of great interest in the land that we already have zoned for this. And by the time that that's under construction, we believe that there will be a need for more for new economic investment from the private sector. We are working with the county at their request to see if there's opportunities on a shared vision for this area. But what we're needing to do is is that because the infrastructure that would be necessary to serve this area would run through the east of Leisure Town area, we need to start planning for what that infrastructure need is so that can be included as part of this first plan that's being completed. So as as I mentioned, the normal process would be to prepare a specific plan and an associated environmental work. That effort would easily be over $2 million. But because, you know, we're counting our pennies right now and watching our budget, we need a minimum of 375,000 to get things started, which would identify preliminary land use plan. It would identify fiscal impact analysis and the benefits of of planning this area. And then finally, the infrastructure needs assessment to say what infrastructure will be necessary. So honestly, this is really kind of a bargain for the effort that we need to get done to to move forward with this. So that we've included that because it is a new cost augmentation request out of Measure M, which we've used for economic growth investment opportunities. Next slide, please. This one, the last one, I think it is, is just to give you kind of an update on the Major M Neighborhood Park Improvement Projects that we presented to you several years ago. Coming out of the pandemic, we were very purposeful in trying, and at the same time, let me back up. Coming out of the COVID pandemic, and then at the same time, we went into a new council form of government. We went into six districts and an at large mayor. And so council supported the idea of making some significant investments and upgrades to some of our existing neighborhood parks that were in need of some upgrade and attention. And keep in mind, because our development impact fee does not include funding sources for existing park renovations, this was all Measure M driven. And so you can see here that, you know, while it's taking a little bit of time because these things these things are significant upgrades, we have begun work and are about ready to complete more work, or initiate work, I should say, on four of the six projects, which leaves the two Sierra Vista and Alamo Creek that need to be completed. So next slide, please, just an update on these. The Sierra Vista Park, you know, includes a variety of upgrading amenities, as you can see here. Next slide. The construction cost right now is estimated, well, we've allocated 1.9 million, the estimated cost is 3.5, which includes a budget shortfall of 1.6. Now, please note that this does not include the original modular unit for after-school care, so this is just strictly for the park improvements. Next slide, please. Then we have the other one in, for Alamo Creek Neighborhood Park, smaller scale upgrades, which I believe we're still, you know, trying to value engineer to see if we can bring it to more closely within budget. But on that note, if you, next slide. Here you see that we have a budget shortfall of just under 400,000. Now, our commitment, you know, we made a commitment to this, to neighborhood park upgrades in each districts, unless we're advised otherwise by the council that these are no longer priorities. We do plan that these particular improvements would be included in this year's CIP project going forward, but we'll have that conversation and finalize that when we bring the CIP budget to council. Next slide. So with that, those are the projects. As I said, just real quickly before I turn it over to Ken, there's no real urgent need to prioritize these. And when I say prioritize, I'm not suggesting that the council come to a group consensus on orders one through six. What we're suggesting that the council consider tonight and for future discussion as part of the next few budget study sessions is, do you want to consider taking that 8.4 million and investing in any one of these projects? And if so, how would you like to do it? There is some time for some of these larger projects, that we have to figure out what are some other options available for funding. But there are a couple of projects on here that are within that dollar value of 8.4 million. And certainly, the one that does, as I mentioned earlier, have a shot clock on it, is the Brown Street Park and Community Center project. So that's before you tonight for your discussion. We will take notes. And with that, I'll turn it back to Ken and his team to tell you about the next steps in our budget process.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So this slide lays out the different budget events that we have coming up. And so every council meeting going forward until the end of this fiscal year, we will have a budget item that we'll be discussing. And so the next meeting on the 28th would be our study session number one, was really the main discussion revolving around the budget augmentation requests. In, on the June 11th meeting, that's our budget presentation study session number two. There will also be the presentation of the CIP budget in that meeting, as well as the department presentations. And then on June 25th is when we would have the budget adoption meeting. Next slide, please. Would that be happy to take any questions or comments?
All right, thank you. Before we open this up to the public, any questions from the council? Member Silva.
A quick question, quick question about, thank you guys for running down through all of it. Question is for regarding the Northeast Growth Area, would that be eligible for any unused ARPA funding?
As far as eligibility, it would be available. And so I should have mentioned that as part of the study session number one, but there will be a discussion on ARPA as well, as far as what currently isn't allocated. But yeah, ARPA, under the revenue loss category, can pretty much be used for any sort of government-related activity.
Thank you. Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, the 8.4 million that's been, you know, I guess, allocated for the grass field in the Station 72, is that within the 43.2 million reserve that we have? Is it separate?
It's separate. So any money that's been committed to projects, it's not part of that reserve?
In that reserve, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And that's it for now. I think the rest is more comments.
Yeah. I appreciate this opportunity to potentially give direction for priorities as we go into the upcoming month and a half for our study sessions. Councilmember Chapman.
The, as you were going through, sharing with us on each of the individual projects, you had mentioned, there is also maybe, no, there is also 3 million from such and such that could be used toward this. Is it a way, can we receive a listing of the projects? The proposed, the estimated cost, or the cost? And then the additional funds that are available that would decrease that to actually give us what is needed? So if we have 8.4 mil to look at overall, and then you've given us eight projects, if we have each of the proposed costs plus the additional funds that you stated are available for a few of those, can we receive that in writing?
Sure. I mean, it's basically just a repackaging of the materials that we provided tonight in terms of potential alternative sources. And so just to quickly capture those, we're hopeful that there may be a grant, the ability to recapture the grant funding for the flood control project. But, you know, Brian is still working on that. We don't have a final answer just yet. The one, well, one of two sources that I mentioned for the Brown Street project, we receive CDBG funding each year in the amount of about a half a million dollars. CDBG has what they call a Section 108 loan, which means that you're borrowing against that annual entitlement for future funds to a certain limit. The maximum that we could get would be about 3.4 million. But, so keep in mind, you're borrowing money that is currently going into other parts of the community for other services to then put into this project, okay? And then the final piece is 785,000 in bond process, former redevelopment agency bond proceeds. And the reason that we're saying that these could be potentially available here for that particular project alone is because of the eligibility that CDBG requires for the neighborhoods that it's serving. But yes, I can put this in a nice, very easy summary sheet, but there's a few pieces
Councilmember Roberts.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a lot there and a lot to consider for the Brown Street project. Like, if we do let that grant grow, go, what do you think is a feasibility that actually ever happen in the future if we don't have that? Probably very low.
Well, I think it's like anything else on the list now and in the future, that it's simply a matter of what councils want to invest in, you know, whether we, and we have projects here that need additional funding. And if the council were to say, well, that is, you know, the priority, and we need to set aside, you know, 2 million every year for the next five, 10, 15 years to get there, then so be it. So I wouldn't say that, you know, that it's never going to happen. It just means that in the future, that we'd have to, council would have to make a commitment to it and continue to find funding available for it. It's unfortunate if that, we'd have to get that back. I certainly don't want to have to give money back, but unfortunately, the case here was is that it was originally anticipated not to be a match, matching grant. And now not only is it a match, it's more match on our behalf because of cost inflation.
Okay. And then, kind of, on some more topic, for those, like, neighborhood parks, like Alamo and Sierra Park, have we looked at either expanding or putting more emphasis in, like, public-private relationships? Because like, when you're talking about Alamo Creek's $390,000, I'm sure you can go talk to Sutter and say, hey, we need $390,000 to finish up this park. And I know they've done that all over the place in the Sacramento area, other cities. So I'm just wondering why we don't have programs like that in Vacaville, when other places do it pretty successfully, along with even other smaller things like Adopt a Park. I'm sure there's local businesses that would like to put their name on something to help out the community, just stuff like that, especially those smaller projects that we can easily check off by engaging the community more. Then with, I mean, what we just voted on earlier with the solar, I know, don't count things before they're in your basket, but yeah, that projected 25 million over years. I know that's.
So I just want to, just in the interest of time, we're going to come back and discuss it. We started with questions. I want to get it to the public, so I just want to be sensitive to, I know there's comments, but right now, let's focus on questions.
Okay. I'll wait till comments come back.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thanks for the information. The one question I have about the Brown Street Park, I think we did get the grant, which is now in question, and I think last time they said we could possibly ask for a reduced program and see if the state would accept it. And I just didn't know if that's still on the table or if that's off the table. It's probably likely that the state wouldn't accept it because we'd have to really reduce it, but I just didn't know about the status of that, possibly resubmitting a smaller project to the state.
So the answer is, is that yes, that's still an option available, but you're correct, that the predictability of their, the outcome of that is unknown. And more importantly perhaps is that the, there's no one easy fix to say that if you take this out, it saves X amount of money to get you to that gap. It's really a lot of, you know, a lot of pieces to get there. And so at what point does the project get away from the original vision that they approved the funding for?
Real quick, the question on the funds that could be directed because they qualify through CDBG or redevelopment, Ken, is there an example of what that is being taken from? Or as an example of, yes, we could make a decision to move it or use it, but what are we giving up if we do so? I mean, I'm sure that's not an easy answer, but the question is.
Probably for our Housing and Community Services Director, it is. I could take a stab at it and muck it up, but.
That wasn't nice.
No, she's available.
He would have the answer. He would muck it up.
No, I'm giving her a compliment, that she's going to know this answer right off the top of her head.
Why don't you come down here and fill us in? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Thank you for passing it on. So basically, each year, you have about $300,000 of that grant for projects, and they have to be CDBG-eligible projects. I would say in the past, we have been using them for parks, you know, a portion of park projects, we've used them for street improvements and other, just kind of a little bit of gap financing for couple improvement projects for the city. With the, if we do the loan to get the funds for the park, we estimate the payment for that to be about $100,000. So we would have $200,000 still left each year to assist with other public programs. So hopefully that answered the question.
By creating a loan, we capitalize on the larger amount, pay that back, still have funding for use in the community?
Yes. Yeah, it wouldn't deplete from administrative funding for staff to implement the CDBG program. And right now, the other piece is the public, what's called public services, which we're using currently for youth development programs, those would not be impacted at all.
Okay, thank you. Hold on. Councilmember Silva, and then I'll come back to you.
So we're talking about doing an external loan, going to a third party?
It would be from the federal government.
What?
Uh, head.
Oh, for, because it's CBD, CBD.
Yes.
Development block grant funds.
Yes.
It couldn't be an internal loan?
I think.
I mean, why are we, why are we borrowing money?
Because all of the other internal departments are broke.
No, I mean, we just put money from a larger surplus, right, towards the general fund. So why would we, if we can, if we can move funding around through the years over the course of what a loan would be, why would we?
I guess the question would be, surplus from where?
The present, or our fund we just presented on.
Or the reserve, that's got a different policy.
Yeah, so if we kind of go back to the forecast and reserve, we have done interfund loans before, like when utilities purchase some equipment, because our reserve was so high, rather than have them go outside for that, we actually did a loan internally, because it's a better rate than we would get on our investments at the time, and it's also cheaper for utilities than borrowing it outside. The issue that we're kind of facing right now, if the forecast is right, is that we are depleting our reserve. And so if you were to kind of reallocate that somewhere else, then that's, it just brings that reserve down even further. And so that is the balance, is that you could definitely borrow for the general fund, but with kind of the forecast of the reserve is draining over the years, that you would kind of lose the flexibility of having that reserve.
How long would the loan, the loans, five years? Is that still the case?
I believe it's 10.
Or 10 years? Okay.
And we would also need to check with head and see if that kind of financial arrangement would be possible. We've not done it that way before, but we would need to check into that.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Question, on one of the projects, the safe routes to school, you said for the all 20 schools, it would be 6 mil, 16 mil. Why are we, why would we be looking at all 20 schools when all of them are not in need of, their need is not as great as some of the, the needs are not equal for all 20. There are some school districts where they already have the flash and lights, and we haven't had heard of any major issues, but then there are others. So why wouldn't we look at those that are in need, need?
Sure. Thank you. I'll try to clarify. So again, what we were hoping to do through this new program that we were introducing is to be in front of the needs for each individual school, whether it was just a simple fix or a more involved fix, because we wanted to be ready to present a plan for grant funding opportunities. And depending on, you know, the hierarchy that's, you know, we were suggesting as part of that program to council, that we use not only the technical needs, but also the socioeconomic needs, you know, for underserved and so forth, as part of the scoring criteria. So that will be coming back. But what I, our intention of bringing it to you tonight is simply to give you an update that we heard you loud and clear at that initial meeting, that, you know, why wait for grant funding? This is important. And so this is simply to say, we heard from all the school principals, the school districts, we heard from, you know, residents who send their schoolchildren, you know, got a whole bunch of recommendations. Gwen Owens, our traffic engineer, and her team went out, went through all those reports or requests, did their own technical observations and data to come up with, here's what we would need. And, you know, just to give you an idea, we are looking at 536 accessible ramps at a cost of 4 million, 333 high-visibility crosswalks at a total cost of 900,000, 21,000 square feet of sidewalk gaps, 34 rectangular flashing beacons, and 25 radar feedback signs. And so not every school needs each and every one of these things, but this is just to give you an idea, that if you were to say, let's go and do this, that's the total cost. Now, the intention is, and we're going to be coming back to council with this information soon, to say, here's the individuals, schools, all 20 of them, in order of priority based on safety. Okay? And then from there, council can start saying, well, let's make an investment, or let's explore going in there. But again, we currently do not have designated funds allocated to one or 20 of these, for sure. And that's where the grant. And that's where the grant process comes in.
I was just wondering how that 16th, I mean, you answered my question. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And if I could, I'll just go ahead and add a comment for clarity is, when this came to us, it was also to be in front of shovel-ready projects, because funding that comes through the SLA, you know, STA, then we want to be ready to be able to capitalize on what our priorities are. So that's happening all the time. And so that's just from a priority standpoint. You can't start a project unless you're ready to be able to say, we've done the analysis. And I remember making a comment, that is, if there was any one school right now that we felt that was grossly unsafe, and how could we allow this to happen, I would expect that our Public Works Director would bring that to us immediately and say, we've got to solve this problem now. So this is really about, you know, forward-thinking planning.
And I, if I may continue.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that. I just, with STA, with STA, you know, you gather the data and data, data, you gather it, but then it takes years before the funds come in. And so, yeah.
Well, and that's part of, and that's part of which I think will be helpful when it comes back to the council for priorities, just to understand the implication. But if there's priorities, STA is really good about looking at individual cities within the county and saying, what are your project needs? And we pitch them all the time. And they're very responsive based upon our needs. That's part of my ability to sit on the STA, so.
That's right. So I'm going to have to.
If there are issues, then you let me know.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on. So with that, no other questions, I'm going to open it up to the public for comment.
Hi, Gin. I want to recognize that there are many well-deserving projects, but I am here to ask you to give priority to the Brown Street Park project. That area has been ignored and unrecognized. And as you know from Councilmember Silva, it gets all the places where we need to house homeless people, and I have nothing against that, and places where we need to put the low-income apartments. But it doesn't get any of the good stuff. I've lived in that area for 54 years. I do know a little bit about what I'm speaking of. When I was a kid, we went to Markham School because that was the only place we had to play. We at least could run through the field and have games, but kids can't even do that anymore because they've built extra onto the campus and all the schools have to be fenced and locked up now. So they don't even have that. They did put Trower Park in Markham, which is the park that I live closer to, which we are anxiously awaiting some improvement. But I wish you guys would look at like the size of Trower Park as opposed to the size of Arlington, Meadowlands, Stonegate, what's that other one, Magnolia. Those parks are like four times the size of Trower Park. And there is nothing on the Brown Street side where there is abundance of multifamily units. There's a lot of people that live over on Brown and Callan and a lot of kids. And not only kids use parks, I use my park, but I think it's time that you prioritize that area more. They deserve to have whatever we can give them. I mean, we're not going to have a big, huge park because there isn't room. But what we can do, that area deserves to have that because they don't have anything. And like I said, they've been, it's been that way for at least 54 years that I've been here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I think no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion. I think while we're waiting, I see a light, but there's always priorities, and I think this is always an opportunity for us to rethink the past. Same time, anytime you're reprioritizing, it can create tension. And it doesn't have to be personal, but it can feel personal within the community as to what is important to a council and what a council wants to give and has the ability maybe tonight to provide some direction as we're going into the budget. So, Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, so taking personal feelings out of it, looking at it from a monetary perspective. So number one, yes, let's reallocate 8.4 million back into these others' projects. Then the question comes up to what? It's kind of my thinking, kind of going through the pros and cons and where we're at from each of the six suggested previously identified priorities. So the new NPR center, 40 to 60 million, I'm leaning towards 60 million. I think has a huge potential to really serve multiple needs in our community. I think, you know, and I want to go rehash some of the comments I made in the past, but that can really help address a lot of different families. I don't know about, you know, generating sufficient revenue. I think, you know, we need more studies to see that, or at least I would like to see the data on that. Nevertheless, ideally, it should be able to generate something to at least help maintain ongoing costs. And it'd be interesting to see how large-ticket items such as that can be worked into ongoing community, you know, improvement-type plans or whatnot with different public-private partnerships, ongoing funding from, you know, other external grants from the state or whatnot. But absolutely, that person, I would love to see that come to fruition. Fire Station 72 expansion, 20 million, that's something, you know, we've been talking about. It went from, you know, completely building a brand-new station to now, you know, expanding, going in vertical, I think is, sounds like a wise, a wise decision to accommodate that need. I need some more clarity on the need. I know we're talking, it sounds like we're projecting for the future of what the need will be for, for that relocation. So it'd be kind of interesting to see to weigh those options and have some data behind, behind that as far as where we're at. The flood-controlled detention basin, you know, that's one of those things that kind of rolling, it feels like we're rolling the dice on. So, but there, like, for me, I'm much more inclined to kind of wait to see if we get the, are able to recoup a $3 million grant, maybe, maybe there's something else that opens up to allow us to minimize the cost for that and still get a quote-unquote win. The challenging part for some of these is that from the community's perspective, the investments that we take often are taken for granted or we don't truly see or experience the value. And that's something that I'm always trying to constantly weigh, you know, as we move forward. Safe routes to school is something that absolutely is needed. This one's an interesting one. I know Dr. Chapman has been very, very representing the different issues, particularly around the painting area, very well. And to the point or questions like, how much are these different projects? How much do they cost and whatnot? That's something I think we definitely got to look at. And, you know, there's been some, like, for example, around the Markham Avenue, it's a mess as far as, you know, people behavior, right? So there's infrastructure put in place, but in the end, it comes down to human behavior. And one way I think we've indirectly addressed many of possible, the concerns about safe routes to schools is we added police personnel. We've adjusted salaries twice within these past four years to make it more competitive, to have qualified, competent, well-respected police officers in our department, to where we now have, you know, a fully functional department where at one point we had to pull back on different services. So having traffic control back in place, that, I think that's, that's maybe not a direct way, but an indirect way, that it'd be interesting to see how a lot of those issues are being addressed from when this original list was created. So I, for me, I feel like the safe routes to school is still not, we should never ignore that aspect, but it's still kind of a one-to-one type of scenario. I'll jump to the Northeast growth area. You know, I think that's something that, you know, obviously we got to do a lot of groundwork, paperwork. And I say we, city staff and whoever we bring in. But, you know, there, I'm kind of curious to see if ARPA can handle that 375, or at least a small portion of it, to just kind of minimize the cost to measure in funds, if that's something council is willing to entertain. I'm just curious to see if that's something there. But even that said, it's a small-ticket item, but obviously it's going to take away from something else. Last point on the Brown Street Park, we have $6.7 million grant from the state. I'm not, never really in favor of giving money back to the state to go to other communities. So that's, for me, that's one way to look at this particular, this particular item. This is $6.7 million of taxpayer money that has been reinvested back in our community. It's kind of, you know, for different reasons, you know, for different reasons, it's at where it's at. The one thing I want to, I think in the sense, like, you know, I hear, you know, different comments and whatnot, you know, and looking at it from a superficial, like, perspective, oh, that's a pretty area or whatnot, or pretty, pretty pictures and whatnot, when I was going around to the community to ask for input, whether they liked it or not, or, you know, what options they would like and this and that. The way I kind of want to make sure people understand this particular one is that it's not, it's not truly a park, right? There's park amenities to it, but at its heart, when you look at the fact that it has these different amenities that will bring people not just from that area, but from throughout the city, similar to that of Play For All Park, it brings people from throughout the region, this in itself can be a catalyst to where we can find ways to generate revenue for an area that is difficult to generate revenue for. And how do we get, when you have an area that generates relatively low property tax, because every, a majority of the properties there are subsidized, there's not homeowners, there's not that capital, this in itself can be, and what it really is, is it's an economic development driver. It's something that will allow for prosperity. It's something that will allow for people to pursue that American dream. So from, again, if they can go from homelessness and a willingness to work their butt out of homelessness, that they have, they'll have shelter to do that, they'll have the resources to do that, they'll have a commercial kitchen if they want to start a food business, if they want other services that they can tap into the county, there's a county building there. But that area, that community center in itself, while it's not large enough to hold quinceañeras, it's a big request for the community, it allows for outdoor patio space to allow for live events. The one thing that I feel is missing in this, that it's really key, is to have the ability to, if you have a performance stage, right, unless it's something that has electrical access and with an enhanced ability to hold live events, to streamline live events, whether it be boxing matches or whatnot, World Cup games, so on and so forth, that in itself would bring people out. That creates an opportunity for entrepreneurship. That creates an opportunity to help develop our community, and that adds a unique, a unique amenity, a unique asset that is totally lacking throughout this complete region. So to me, it's not just a park. It's an opportunity to truly transform an area that has been identified for blight. That's why it's not even under Parks and Rec, it's under housing, because it was an area of blight. That funding came out from the state to purchase, tear down apartments and build something new that currently is caged, open field. And so for me, if you look at 8.4 million, you know, right there, you can take care of a Northeast growth area, you can take care of the Brown Street project, to really, again, from everybody's perspective, to where we all look to and see that, hey, we invested in a particular area that is, that has been problematic, that is promising. And when we see things start to transfer and where people start developing pride and the ability to have a pride of ownership in an area where people don't own anything, they don't, they don't own the housing, they don't own the roof that's over their head, that in itself allows the opportunity for all of us to look back and see this is a part of a legacy that we contribute towards enhancing our community. And then through that, we continue to work with different partners and expand the winds out of that, not just for that area, but throughout the city. So that's my comments.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it makes much sense to keep it in there. My concern, you know, part of me wants to put it in the reserve and see how things go and squirrel it away just to make sure we're safe with some of the financial uncertainty that we, that's been talked about. But I also, on the same aspect, wonder what the money will be worth in six months, like some of these projects. We just had to add money to the Creek project, we had to add money to light projects. So I'm concerned of kind of the cost, the construction costs and some of these things that we need to get done. So if it's not an option to split the money amongst the different districts and then maybe, you know, give everybody a million dollars and then let, let the mayor do something, if we can't find some sort of way to do that, because there, there is a lot of projects within each district that could really use some love. And while I respect certainly the advocacy to knock out some of these things that are on this list, I don't think these are the only things on the list. I mean, we already talked about the creek downtown, where we're going to fix one section of the creek, but there's another section that we're not going to fix right now. So there's a multitude of different things that need to be fixed. Is it, I'll go in reverse order from what I wrote down. The Northeast growth area specific plan, it's the least on there, but I also feel like with the uncertainty about whether we're going to even maintain control of our water, should we be investing in this plan until we have some certainty as to whether or not we're going to have water for people to drink in this, in this area? So that, you know, that's, that's kind of a big unknown for me. As far as Brown Street goes, I mean, I think this council has really done an amazing job trying to build upon the vision that Councilmember Silva has done for Brown Street. And, you know, I supported the 3.1, I think it was three, almost 3.1 or 3.2 million dollars that we just spent on Trower Park, which was a tremendous bump up from what the initial cost would be. And so while I respect that, I don't, I don't know that we got to put it all there right now. I definitely support your vision in trying to beautify and uplift that area though, when we can. The safe routes to school, I think that's somewhere where I'd like to look. I know that there may be some grant funding associated with that, but if we can identify some very unsafe areas throughout the entire city that can protect our kids that are walking to school and help direct traffic, I think that would be a priority because if we're aware of some of those things, I don't think we should neglect that. I know that Brian McClain and your team have done a tremendous job with some innovation and technology with regards to the flooding. I think that we had some success. I'd be interested to know, you know, if the $8 million with this flood control would absolutely, undoubtedly save Vacaville from any, you know, sort of hurricane-type rain or something like that that we would get. But certainly I see that as having a benefit for the entire city based upon the amount of rainfall. As much as I would really love to see a multipurpose rec center in District One at Centennial, I don't think that's the best use of this money right now. I think that there's other places that we can put this that are related to safety or directed at keeping our kids safe at school. I'd be willing to entertain, you know, more conversations about the timing related to any sort of renovation or relocation of Station 72. I think that there are some, you know, some development and some biotechs that's going to break ground and hopefully generate some revenue for the city that might be able to assist with some of that in the future. So I just don't know what the timeline is for that. So, so I'm all for reallocating those funds. Those are kind of my priorities as I see them fit. So, you know, I know there's a lot of unknowns, but I think the safety of the entire community, I think, outweighs amenities during financial uncertainty.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments also. I mean, clearly, when you're working on a project, like Councilmember Silva has a vision for an area, it can be contagious when you look around at all that it could do. And I can, I completely appreciate it and I'm thankful for all the work you're doing on it. I'm overly concerned about the funding gap, knowing that there's other needs and we're cobbling up funds to try and reach a delta that was never even part of the plan, whether it is 7.2 to 11.4 million, it's a gap. It's a span of a gap that takes all the money that, when I'm looking at. It's a span of a gap that takes all the money that, when I'm looking at, sometimes things are nice to have and sometimes there's things that we need to have. There's some unanswered questions. I appreciate the planning and EIR in a, in a specific plan. I would, I'd like to make sure that that doesn't get lost because they are tied together. Not certain that the funding has to come from this, but that is a priority, because we're working in two areas, we need to be doing that in secret, consecutively, so that we're not missing out on our planning. It's hard to ignore when Brian McLean, you came to us and you expressed a solution, and we've been longing for years, if not decades, for some of our flood solutions. So we may not have to know the answer tonight, but if, if there is opportunity for funding, that's great. But if we're waiting years for funding and then we have floods and we have the problems, there are more costs than just the loss and the damage to the homes. There's the cost each year to damage within the creeks that we don't control and staffing and all the expenses that go into emergencies that I've experienced while I was on staff. And so I have a hard time skipping over the, there's money and there is a need. And it won't be an emergency or an urgent need till it's there, but the unplanned emergency, I won't sit comfortably at night knowing that I'm putting it towards something that has great vision and great value, but safety comes first. And Public Works is part of the, what I would call the public safety triad, when we're making sure that we're planning for a community. That, I mean, if there was a single item for me tonight, it is, I would hope that we would have on the near term an understanding if there is funding. But if not, when you can reach a position of safety for, for a flood path that can be devastating in this city, I cannot ignore that. I realize there's other levels of priorities and funding and access to funding. I realize that a recommendation like that, if for some reason that's the direction we went, there is a, there is a shot clock, as you say. But the reality is, is recognize that we went down a path and there was vision. The execution of it requires an excessive amount of spending that was never part of a city priority, just wasn't. And, and that sounds, it may sound impersonal, but when we're looking at the way we're having to spend money and that you're trying to prioritize for the upcoming years, I don't want to be a year from now and, or two years or three years from now and say, well, we could have invested in flood control and we didn't. So I like some ideas that there's some low hanging fruit, the fact that there's some parks, Sierra Vista or even Alamo, you know, Alamo, you know, Alamo Creek Park, well, that's almost like a citywide park because everybody uses it. Those are low numbers and hopefully there's some CIP opportunities to go after those, because those, there's been a lot of funding that this council has directed towards Trower. And I realize it's not Brown Street, but there's a lot of money going into parks. And at some point, we have to look at, you know, what is community safety? And to me, that's a top priority is, is the, is the flood basin. The work has been done to invest in it, and I realize that, that, that may, if that's something that this council decides on, it may end a project on Brown Street. Brown Street was never intended to have $11 million shortfall, and it was never even identified as part of a park. And, you know, Councilmember Silva, you acknowledge it, it's not just a park, and if not a park, what is it? Well, then it, what's the business plan? What's the, you know, what is the, the plan behind it? Not saying that it wouldn't be successful, but it's, it's money that was never intended to be spent, and I just, in good conscience, can't commit my, you know, my view of where you take extra money and put it into something that isn't the highest priority. It is a priority, it's just not the highest priority when there's a funding gap.
Councilmember Wiley?
I just wanted to weigh in on a couple of things. It's a good thing we're not trying to prioritize them tonight and come to some discussion, because they're all worthy things to do, but there's a limited amount of income that we have. It has been a long time since Vacaville has had something that we can say, look at what we have with this new, like, multipurpose building. It would be wonderful to have that, but that has a huge price tag as well. And the same thing with the Brown Street Park, that sounds great, especially since we had the money from the state, but that doesn't change the fact that it's still this huge gap of funding, we can't just really put that in without overextending in other areas. So while I love those two projects, I have real reservations about jumping into them, mostly for the funding issue. I do feel like the flood control should be a priority or near the top of the list because of the fact that it has been a, a historic problem in Vacaville and puts people at a risk, and you never know when it's going to happen. We have a plan now that sounds like it can address many of those needs, so I would hate to have the plan sit on the shelf if we have funding available. And from my history as a school teacher, I do really think that Safe Routes to School is important, and we don't have Safe Routes to School now, but I do believe, like Councilmember Silva said, a lot of it is human behavior and what we need to do to teach the people driving, parents are some of the worst people, walking their kids across the street when people are coming, you know, to let people know safety is a priority, but you've got to change your behavior to do that. And I also agree with Councilmember Chapman saying, let's target the schools that are most in need of safety improvements if we're looking to spend money. And the other part of this discussion, should we reallocate the 8.4 whatever million for the grass field and the other? I do feel like we should do that in order to come to a decision on how to spend it, so that the people of Vacaville can see we are spending the money. And if it's a flood control, it's not nearly as great looking and look what we did, but it's the safety and that pressing need for that, that we just need to let people know that had to be a priority if that's how the decision is made. So thanks for the information of the budget and having a chance to talk about it in several settings.
So what I see right now is, is there's action item on this plus the direction. Mr. City Manager, do you believe that you've got enough input before we take the vote, at least on the, the two options?
I think we're off to a good start. I don't know that the full consensus has been reached. And again, I, I don't want to leave you without, you know, direction or assistance. We're here to, to provide that as needed, but really it comes down to, I, I think the first thing we've heard is, is for most everyone, is that reinvest the 8.4. But to where is that, you know, there's still some discussion that I think needs to be had. And then it ultimately comes down to if, and, and I'm hearing, you know, between a couple of different projects that have the opportunity to be funded with that, you know, 8.4 million. And so I guess then the next step would be, do you want to finalize that decision so that it can be included as part of this year's upcoming budget? Especially if that is the desire to invest in the Brown Street project that does have a time limit associated with it. So I, I think we're off to a good start, but we certainly can use some more between now and, you know, the final budget approval.
From what I can see, it would be helpful, because some of this just needs to digest, right? There's certainly an understanding is, is there the ability to use ARPA funds for a piece of the, the EIR? That could be an option. Is there, you know, what's the timeline on, is there true funding for a grant for flood control? What, I mean, what is some of the, the implications? But it would be very beneficial knowing that there's a timeline on the Brown Street project, so that that can be clearly understood as we finalize our budget. So if that's, if that satisfies everyone tonight, it allows us to really understand it in more detail. But you, you need action tonight, which is the option one, balance the budget and take the, the reserves, the 8.4, and this council is willing to reallocate it. We'll have to vote on that.
That, that certainly gives us the ability to proceed with the, the subsequent study sessions that we'll be presenting to you.
Okay. Councilmember Silva?
Yeah. Disappointed is the key word I'm hearing from or feeling, nor talks about feelings and emotions and whatnot. I do absolutely appreciate the support, although it wasn't always like clear or confident support in, you know, putting money into Trower Park. You know, if anybody goes around there, you see the little bit of love that it needs, has needed. That said, it has improved through the years. When I was a kid, it was full of glass shards, I mean, Greg was, grew up around there, riding his motorcycle. That was probably him, right? Sorry. So I, you know, I, I think, you know, I, I hear public safety all the time, you know, campaign season comes around, everybody's talking about public safety, right? There, there's more to public safety than what we always perceive it to be. Public safety is something that can be perpetuated by idle hands. I think everybody has heard of some element of that, a business plan, you know, to, you're absolutely right. You know, if we're talking about a business model, then where is a business plan? Well, there isn't one, because we got to get to step one first. We put all this funding into helping support neighborhood associations, that's one possible mechanism that can oversee that. But quite frankly, if you're having a resident, something that's zone residential, it's something that can be organic. It's something that has been demonstrated in other communities. So, you know, we're not talking about, I guess, prioritizing, but what I'm asking council is, do not kill it just yet. You know, if, if you're gung ho and, hey, we already put too mu, we already put enough or too much into Markham, because I've heard that in private conversations from different leaders in our community, then that's, you know, there's not much I can do about that. But for other folks to look at something that we can say, hey, that's where we put our measure in funds. You can actually see it, you can walk in, you can experience it, you can feel it, you can taste it, you can hear it, all right? So like that, that in itself, it, it's, it's not like, to, to me, it's, it's something that is tangible, that we can look back and say, hey, we were a part of that, right? Similar to solar panel or whatever, whatever it might be, right? It's something that we can see. Sadly, you know, against even the recommendations of our traffic engineers, the blinky lights, right? We put those up and mark them. Not one person has said anything about them. I don't think they even look at the lights, which is what traffic engineers were, were even suggesting that, hey, you know, this doesn't always like, you know, maybe it's something that feels good but doesn't actually do good. But having police officers right there pulling over somebody who's doing stupid stuff, you know, that, that starts changing the culture. And that's what we're looking at. How do we change a culture from an area that, again, has been problematic, that's been working hard individually, organically, just to overcome the different struggles that some have come to this country for, to work towards a better life, others who've dedicated decades of their life in a particular area and continue to give back, you know, and others who come as, as a guest to a local school, that in itself is a, an area that in itself pulls people from throughout the, throughout the region, looking for their kids to be put into a, a school system that has diversity, that allow, that celebrates that within the Spanish English Immersion Program. And don't think for once that any parents that come from outside the area look at the areas that they live at and look at the conditions of, of Markham. And how that in itself is something that's an economic driver. We talk about, you know, making single family homes and whatnot and executive housing. Well, a lot of those folks, particularly in the science industry, are folks who value diversity. They themselves are going to check that diversity box. And so the more that they feel like there's a, a place that celebrates, celebrates the differences that exist here in the United States and that this is the land of opportunity and this area, Vacaville, can be a shining beacon for this entire region and example for that. To me, that's the potential that currently exists on Brown Street with the residents and with the local supportive or, or community at large in expanding that throughout our region. And so, leave it at that.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One for City Manager for maybe what might help us get online and have better discussions, maybe something on a much smaller scale than what we did at the ARPA, where we get the list of the projects, maybe put it together, our thoughts as a necessary outcome council meeting, but maybe just for our meetings with you to give a little bit more guidance and thought on these different projects.
So if you're referring to taking the materials that we shared with you tonight and giving that to you with maybe a little bit extra that we may or may not have, I'm happy to do that, to help give you what you need to make an, you know, more informed decision at a future meeting. Absolutely.
Okay. And yeah, a question for Brian. Maybe at some point if you can send me an email which flood grant you guys are pursuing, and I can reach out to other contacts that have various agencies, see if there's other ones available that we might not even be aware of. Because I do know quite a few grant writers at Cal O'Leary, some of them do deal with flood mitigation, so I can try to help out as much as I can on that aspect. And just a couple of thoughts on the public safety thing. I kind of agree that the Safe Routes to School should be probably priority over the flooding, because in all reality, the floods in Vacaville, as unfortunate as it is, are just minor property damage, like, we don't have any major rivers, it's not like Russian River or Houston, people aren't going to be washed away unless they're playing down in the creek when the flood occurs. Granted, it can be, have secondary effects of public safety response and getting through floods, but the floods we have here are not life-threatening floods in themselves. So again, and also prioritize like kids getting to school safely, they don't need to hit my car riding their bike to school. And then also quality of life stuff. Parks is a big part of it, and like I said, public-private partnerships could probably help mitigate a lot of the park shortcomings, because they don't exist in Vacaville. So we should really look at that. If we need to bring on somebody, even though it's extra, either contractor or somebody knows additional money, but somebody good will easily pay for themselves and the money that they bring in. Somewhere like a grant writer, like we've talked about before, is they'll easily pay for themselves if they're worth their weight.
Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. I kept turning my light on and off.
It's on now.
It's on now, all right. The, your comment about the flooding that we have here in Vacaville is just minor, it's more than minor, and it's been going on for decades, decades. And when I say it's more than minor, you should be over off of Alamo, along Alamo, when people are filling the sandbags. I mean, when you have, have to take out flood insurance that was not there when you first purchased your home. This is for decades. Homes that they have pump systems put under their house on the side to pump the water from the flood that come up and enters. So it's not a minor issue. It's minor to those who are not aware of how severe it floods in Vacaville at times. I am, I have to commend Brian for the work he has done with the flooding. It has made an enormous difference, and I know, you know, I, I can't tell him enough. And he has met with me, hit me from day one when he knew it was a huge concern, to show me where the retention basins where they tried decades ago and an area where they couldn't place. Anyway, there's history to this. And it's also a safety. And when it first started flooding, and this is a personal experience in the development where we purchased, bought, there's a reporter, newspaper article that, that has been archived, where people were actually in their rowboats going around the neighborhood, and it's a development of about 100 homes. So it, it gets serious. And the way the weather has been here in the past year or two, that's happened, the way it's happening throughout the United States, it's, it's, it's unreal, it's nothing like we're used to, it's not a norm, it's not a norm. Back in, oh, don't get me to going, but I can talk to whoever is interested, but Back in, oh, don't get me to going, but I can talk to whoever is interested, but I have a home in Tennessee and they had tornadoes. We didn't deal with tornadoes in, in Nashville, but they're hitting now. You don't know what we're going to get, but all I can do is thank Brian for the work that he and his team has done thus far. And it is a safety issue also. It's not just something good to do. Now, do you think about the work that, that we approved for the creek? Well, a little erosion, okay, that's, you don't look at that as being major, but it can become major, major. Yes. So flooding with me is very important. I was going to speak on it, you know, others were sharing what their priorities were. You know, safety is, and I keep telling you, that is my priority. It is number one for me. And that is, for me, for the quality of life, safety is number one. Okay. So when you speak of safe schools, safe routes, do we need to look at all 20 schools? Maybe not. But those that have been lingering, those have been at great need for years, I think we need to be looking at that. We need to do what needs to be done. So, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Silva?
Oh, let me finalize by saying, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I'm not taking anything-
Because what I want to do now is I want to wrap this up.
Yes.
Because what we're not going to do is, is we're not going to, well, it depends upon the motion. We know what's on the table, but given enough direction unless somebody felt it strongly that they needed to make a motion, but, go ahead.
Does he want a motion tonight for direction?
Well, I mean, we are under a timeline and so-
Okay.
The thing is, is the potential to give the specific direction or to provide feedback is all within the scope of the council, given this, this agenda item, so.
If I may, I would like to make the motion.
Hold on a second.
Oh.
Councilmember Silva had a, his light on.
One year ago, about one year ago, while I was with other colleagues at Solano College, putting on an event for families for, to explore math and science at the college campus in Vacaville, we started getting texts, somebody got shot. Young man took a bullet in the head in the Markham neighborhood. And we talk about safety. People deserve to be safe in that neighborhood. Kids need something to do, they need something positive, and if they're not acting right, they need to be held accountable. Talk about quality of life. People need the opportunity to pursue economic prosperity in the United States, and that includes here in Vacaville, and that includes, and if it just so happens to be in an area called Markham, that we, yes, we put more money than years past in, than decades past. You know, to me, when we talk about safe, that, that's safety as well. It's not the only area that's incidents like that happen. And obviously, you know, some of the guys grew up here, you guys know, things used to be a little bit worse, things have improved. I don't want to see them go back, nobody wants to see them go back. You know, everybody's just looking for an opportunity, an investment in the infrastructure to address where we need to be, so we can start working together to where we need to go.
Wanted to make a motion?
Yes, I wanted to make a motion.
Go ahead and, why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
My motion is that we take the 8.4 million and of the Measure M funds and use it to address the flood control, safe schools.
I think, okay, go ahead.
I want, okay, I'm still talking, okay. The 6.7 mil, there's a gap there for what is needed. However, if I was to add that and all of this with the numbers that were given, it's going to save the 8.4 mil. So I want to make the motion in such a manner that I would like for the priority to be the flood control, safe route, um, safe routes to school and the Brown Street area.
Okay.
If funds, as funds permit.
I suppose that the, the challenge is, is we're at a time, we're at a time crunch because there's a, there's an immediate gap that if it's not reached, as time permits, runs out the clock. So that's the issue with Brown Street. And so-
Okay.
If the council, well, it has to be, I don't recall, but I believe it's next year, it's 20, I mean, the time, what's the time for Brown Street?
2027.
2027.
But you have to break, you have to-
It has to be completed by then.
Has to be completed.
Be completed by then.
I don't want to interrupt the motion, but, and so I'll let you follow through with it, but just a thought when you-
Why don't you go ahead with what your thought is? I don't want to interrupt your motion.
Okay. As funds permit, I would like to make, make, I would like to make the motion that we use the 8.4 million and reallocate it to address flood control, safe school, safe routes to school, and the Brown Street project.
Well, I, okay, is there a second? Second, okay. Anyone else have a motion? Senator Stockton?
My motion is that we take the 8.4 million of Measure M and that we prioritize that with flooding. And on a side note, I will tell you, Councilwoman Chapman, if I'm willing to donate a portion of my district dollars towards addressing some of the safe school stuff, I think we've talked a little bit about that. So with that commitment to you, I, I think we should focus on the flooding and, and I'll, and I'll put some of my district dollars towards making sure some of these kids are safe. If we identify a at-risk area that can be helped.
There a second?
I'll second.
This is seem, I mean, we're, we're separating what we're talking about, but in doing so, this basically would be what the ask is, is reallocating the 8.4 million. Councilmember Wiley?
You know, just a while ago, you were saying there were several questions that are still outstanding. Can we get this grant? You know, what, what about this? What about the ARP funds? So it seems kind of premature to me to make a vote on specific projects. I think we all are agreeing about taking that money out of the 8.4, but that's why I was wondering, was there an answer? We have to have a question, we have to have a list right now for that second part. So that's what I wanted to answer.
There's no requirement to have a list tonight for funding. The requirement is, is to give direction for the budget to, to be able to, first of all, address the, the, the funding gap in option one. But secondly, to take the, the funds that were set aside and agree as a council. So the bare minimum is, is we've, we've, through our discussion, we've all committed that option one would, would be part of the motion. But secondarily, is, is the sound is, is everyone has also said that there, they believe that reallocating the funds would also be supported with a vote. Third is, is there's no, there's no requirement tonight to actually pick one until we leave here tonight. The feedback is where I started by telling the city manager, do you have enough information? There's been a lot of conversation here to help guide the direction, but the very least there would be the 8.4 million to begin to apply towards this year's budget, understanding there are these priorities that staff is hearing us. Do I have that clear?
Yes, and can I-
Can I re-
-bear this out a little bit? Go ahead.
There's a motion on the floor. If I may, I would like to resent my second. I didn't have clarity.
That's fine.
I didn't have clarity in the expectations for tonight.
That's fine. And did, did you want to finish?
Yeah, so, so first and foremost, thank you for the, the healthy dialogue. This is what we need to, and I think all of the staff recognizes that these are important projects, one and all, and they all carry different levels of responsibility and community benefit and so forth. And what we've presented to you tonight puts you in a difficult situation with some tough decisions to make at some point. And so that's why we were saying that the, the main objective for tonight is, as the mayor expressed, is are you comfortable with deficit spending? Because if you're not, then this changes the whole direction for the next three meetings on this subject. So thanks, you know, what I'm hearing is, is that there is a willingness to do that, and we'll finalize that in just a moment. Reinvesting the 8.4 million, that's another good starting point. Finalizing where you want to put that investment, you know, I did mention that there, there is one project that does have a time limit on it, but we still have time. And even if you didn't finalize your decision as part of, you know, the immediate adoption of the budget in June, we could probably live with that and come back as part of a mid-year budget adjustment or what be the case. Because the other piece here is you are asking great questions and admittedly, we were hoping to have every answer available to you by this time. However, Public Works is still finalizing their flood control analysis. The fire department's finishing their standards of covers. So those final answers and then safer routes to school, we're coming back to you with more answers. So I think because there's healthy discussion on a variety of these different topics tonight, that, you know, we could do our best to give you what we think the studies are going to say between now and the next meeting, but it, and, you know, we can see what we do have for you, but honestly, until those reports are completed and vetted and presented, you're not going to have the final answers. And given the level of interest and discussion on all of these subjects, it, it makes sense to, to wait for that information to a certain degree. So I think we, we have what we need to move forward to the next, you know, round of, of budget discussions. We'll try to get you the information that you're seeking for background, you know, backup material on a lot of these projects to use quickly as we can put it together. And then we'll continue this, you know, dialogue at, at a subsequent meeting.
So to be clear, the only action you need us to take is to vote on option one or two right now?
Yes, and then if you can move forward with the 8.4, if you want to reinvest that or not, that's the other piece.
Okay, so that, that's-
Two-part, yeah, this is a two-part, uh-
So yeah, so I, I'm, I want to go with option one and I want to reallocate the 8.4 to something else.
Okay, before we go for a second, I have, I have seen a light for, by, okay, you pulled it off, all right. We have a, we have a motion for, for option one and reinvest 8.4 million and we can go from there. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Well, that was easy.
Yeah. Well, I thought we-
I hope you got the feedback you want. They're personal, I get it.
Thank you. Trustee member Wiley for that question.
So it's, it's 20 after 10, how are we doing on time?
We have one more item and we have a consultant here that has a, a brief presentation. 10:30 is our, our warning track time.
Okay.
So if it's okay with the mayor, I'll go ahead and introduce this and, and Ms. Morris from our, our community development department and her team can give you a introduction to our efforts going forward on inclusionary housing. This is really a study session, so I don't believe there's any formal action necessary. It's simply an update on your investment in this subject.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Carley. Vice Mayor Ritchie, members of council. We have a brief presentation tonight and I just want to say I appreciate the council hearing it. By getting this project kicked off tonight, we're going to be able to utilize some remnant state funds for this, this whole work effort that actually is allowing us to do a little bit more work at no extra cost to the city. So with me this evening, I have Josh Abrams with the Community Planning Collaborative and Leo Ma from Century Urban. These are the consultants that we've hired to assist us in preparing our inclusionary housing ordinance options. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and Leo.
Thank, excuse me, the seasonal allergies are taking a toll on my voice, but hopefully that and children, and hopefully it'll last, it'll last for the, the presentation. I'm Josh Abrams, a principal at Community Planning Collaborative, and we're a small city planning firm. We do a lot of housing policy and a lot of community engagement. We've worked on inclusionary policies in some national cities like Detroit and Seattle and St. Paul, as well as more local cities like Salinas, Redwood City, South San Francisco, a whole bunch of other local ones. And we have two partners working on this project with Century Urban, which is an urban economics firm, I'll let Leo introduce himself, and Gulf Harbor and Letmans, which I think are your current attorneys, who if we, outside attorneys, if you, if we need consults, we can bring them in. I'll just say, the reason we, we asked Century Urban to partner with us is they have a, they have a foot both in the private sector and the public sector, and they have a really nice perspective about cities' needs, but also access to data and developers' needs. Because really, the goal is to, to balance both. Leo, do you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council members. I'm Leo Ma, I'm a managing principal with Century Urban. We're a small real estate advisory consulting firm, and we do a lot of work with regards to inclusionary housing feasibility analysis. And for this project, we'll be assisting with data gathering, market research and doing some of the feasibility analysis. As Josh mentioned, we've worked with him on other inclusionary analysis for cities such as Redwood City, South San Francisco, and we also do work with larger cities such as San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, Berkeley.
Great. So I think of today really as the introduction and an opportunity to talk about some of the base issues, the basic issues, without getting into the specifics about the economics. But sometimes once we start talking about the economics and what the feasibility report says, it gets harder to cover some of the more, the ground, the basic groundwork. So we'll, we'll talk a little about the background, how we got here, make sure everyone knows what we're talking about when we say what's inclusionary housing, what's affordable housing, what are impact fees. There's really three key questions I want to focus in. Are inclusionary housing impact fees legal? Will inclusionary housing and impact fees raise the rents or costs for everyone? And will they stop new development? And then a few words at the end about developing a program. So I think the background started a couple of years ago. The city council approved the Vacaville housing strategy. There was a study session on inclusionary housing. Council directed staff to pursue an RFP and that's how we ended up here today. And the project is really set in two phases. The first phase is data gathering, figuring out the economic condition, doing a feasibility analysis, and then we'll come back to council. We'll do, we'll do a variety of public outreach. We'll talk with a, we're going to have a steering committee and we're going to do some public community meetings. And then we'll come back to council what we've heard and what we've learned. And at that point, we'll ask council, do you want us to move ahead with, with, coming up with the specifics of the, of an ordinance? So the, the goal here is to really, particularly phase one, is to look at the pros and cons of the policy and figure out what works for Vacaville and decide whether or not to proceed. And then phase two, if, if we go there, would be a new round of community engagement, a little more data gathering, but really developing a draft ordinance to review and then also guidelines. Guidelines are, are less glamorous, but really important because they ensure that the program is, is well-run. Just a word, I think most people know, but maybe the audience, it's good to, to cover too, what is inclusionary housing? The, there's a thousand and one variations, but the basic idea is developers sell or rent a portion of new residential units to lower-income households at an affordable level. And usually, it's tied really closely with incentives. So that's the, like, that's the stick, that's the ask. And it's really important to balance that with something to help developers. And the most common thing in California, density bonus law is really generous. So if council moves ahead with an ordinance, although there will be requirements and that'll be a cost, it will be, it'll be balanced. You see, just from this map, it's, it's a pretty common policy. It's been around for over 50 years. It's, it's clustered in more strong-market cities like the Bay Area. And then just looking locally, I should say, we haven't verified all of these cities, but we will, and we'll, we'll come up with what their existing requirements are, just as a point of reference in addition to the feasibility study. But a lot of, a lot of cities in Napa, Sonoma and Solano are either have, have policies, inclusion- inclusionary housing policies, or are considering policies. And I should say, I might, I might go back and forth between inclusionary housing and inclusionary zoning, they're synonymous. The biggest thing to know about inclusionary housing is it's this unique position where cities can get more affordable housing built, but it doesn't actually require public subsidy. All of the other strategies, almost all the other strategies, require a lot of city subsidy to get affordable housing. And include, affordable housing, and inclusionary, inclusionary housing uses the strength of the market in order to get, to produce that affordable housing. The other thing it's really good at is putting the new housing in strong communities, in communities with a lot of resources. And sometimes, if you're using other sources, that doesn't happen so much. Another way to think about why inclusionary is just looking at city documents. So the Vacaville Housing Strategy references it, as well as the housing element calls for studying and determining if it's an appropriate policy. It also helps with RENA goals. We'll look in a few minutes at the affordable housing and other, other production, as well as fair housing goals, AFFH is fair housing. Okay, talk briefly, that's, that's inclusionary housing. Commercial impact fees are similar. There are fee charged by local governments on new development projects to reduce the impacts of the development or provide infrastructure associated with the new developments. And in the case of affordable housing, the idea here is that if you have a lot of new market rate development, a lot of those jobs will pay low-income, lower-income wages, especially in the retail sector, but in pretty much every sector, there's a large number of jobs that pay low or moderate wages. And the idea here is for those cities, those developments to help offset the cost and provide some affordable housing, not directly for their employees, but for the need overall that's generated. So those new developments, they put money, they pay, they pay fees when they construct, when they do construction, a one-time fee. It goes into an affordable housing trust fund, and then the city uses that to build new affordable housing. In an ideal world, or almost always tapping into state and federal subsidies to reduce the cost of construction. But before you're allowed to do a new impact fee, you have to do what's called a nexus study. And a nexus study looks at that relationship I was talking about a second ago. What's the relationship between those new jobs and the need for new affordable housing? And really, the key thing with the nexus study is it sets the maximum. So it might say, for every retail job, you need to charge $200 for a square foot if you want to pay for all of those, all of those low-income employees and help them all get housing. And we all know it's not realistic to charge that much for a square foot. That's where the feasibility comes in, and that's where we'll actually spend most of our time researching it. The nexus study is fairly easy and mechanical, but that's the legal maximum that you're allowed to charge. Okay, transitioning a little, make sure we're all on the same, it's same note, know all the terms, what is affordable housing? The idea here is that there's a general rule of thumb that a government, that a household can spend about 30% of their income for housing. If you look at Vacaville, a lot of people, a third of the, of the, of the city pays more than that. You might call them cosper, and that's what the industry calls them. So that's when we, that's one important thing to remember when we talk about what's affordable. So a income point where they're only paying, spending about 30% of their income on housing. There's a lot of weird complexity, and it's like sometimes a little more and sometimes less, and it doesn't, so don't take it quite literally, but that, that's the basic idea. And then the other concept, to make sure everyone knows, is, is if, so that's what it means to be affordable, but affordable for whom? And then we talk about, we have these various categories, low, very low, and extremely low income are the most, most common. So make sure we know that's based on what's called the median income. So if you look at the poorest person and the richest person, the median income is, is the salary of the person right there in the middle. And so all of the, all of our calculations stem from these two things, 30% of what someone makes, and then different income categories based on the median. So the median in the county is about 113,000. And there's, again, there's a lot of complexity, the state and federal use slightly different numbers, so if you multiply the math and it doesn't come out right, it is, it is what it is. It's not perfectly, it's complicated. Okay, so low income, when we say low income, and this is all for a family of four, it's adjusted based on family size. That's 80% of the median, very low is 50% of the median, and extremely low is 30% of the median. And you can see the numbers, this is the maximum income of someone in those different categories. It's a little different if you look at a household of one. So the numbers get scaled either by bedroom size or household size. So that low-income category goes really between a family of one and a family of four, it goes from 70,000 to 100,000. And if you take the affordable rent for that, that's maybe between 1,700 and 2,500. This low-income category often includes, well, people who in other parts of the country you wouldn't even think of as low, but a teacher might have trouble finding housing here, and they're actually in that low-income house, housing category. Maybe, and we gave some examples, maybe an HR specialist and a part-time landscaper with a couple of kids, they, they're working professionals, or it's often two, two-family working households. Very low income, that's a little bit lower, so that might go from 44,000 to 63,000. Fed assistant, stay-at-home parent with one child, just kind of example. And then extremely low income, Mike, I mean, obviously, it goes that and below, so it could be homeless, but often, it's a lot of either students or seniors on fixed income that are in that extremely low-income category. To put it in perspective, for the median rents in Vacaville, they range from 1,500 to a little over 3,000 for a studio to a three-bedroom. And we'll keep those rents in mind as we look at what the need is. There might not be need, is so much for certain categories, for certain sizes of apartments. So this is recent housing, building permits in, in the city. And you can see, the city's doing okay for, for housing production for above, above moderate. They're, there's, they have a target of 1,000, and they've done 400, actually, a lot. But it's really hard to do that low, very low, and extremely low-income housing without, without, unless you have a significant source of funding, or you're using inclusionary housing, it's really hard to produce that, that affordable housing. Okay, I'm just going to do these three, these three questions, and the first one's actually the simplest, is inclusionary housing legal? And that's pretty clear. The State Supreme Court said it would be, it's legal. The only way that would be overturned is if it went to the federal Supreme Court. There is a framework, though. Cities might have to do a feasibility study if they recommend above 15%. This is a law passed in 2017. And you always have to give developers an option besides just building the units, or it could be paying a fee, or doing off-site construction or land dedication. Cities can choose which of those they want, but it's actually a good practice to have that flexibility too, and it's required by state law. So that's the simple one, is it legal? And then are commercial linkage fees legal? This is also relatively simple. Yes, they're legal also, but you do have to do that nexus study. You do have to document the maximum that they're, and the relationship between the two. Okay. The next question is, will affordable housing requirements make housing too expensive to build? And I want to explain this first, just if you think about how developers, or even you, if you want to sell your house, set the price, it's different than most things. In most things in the world, the producer determines the price. Apple, if they want to, if, they'll decide how much they want to sell their phone for. If they sell it for a lot, they'll sell fewer. If they sell it for less, they'll sell more. They're price setters. But auctions and housing is one of these weird categories where actually, the producer accepts the price, they're price takers. They don't actually get the option of determining how much they want to set the price for, the market does. And if you think about, this is all the houses that are for sale right now, and you could do an equal thing with rent. But if you, if you built this new house here, this new development here, you, everyone else shopping or looking to rent is using the surrounding properties as their comparables, and you just can't, you just can't charge more. Just like if, if you went to your Realtor and you're like, it's been a bad year, the kids are in college, the car broke, I want to sell my house for more, the Realtor's just going to be like, you don't, you don't get to make that decision, the market determines the price. So this is, this is a fairly clear thing, that if the, the developers don't really get to pass those prices along, they really have three options. They can build something different, they cannot build, but they don't get to charge people more. And it's this middle option that we're really worried about. So will affordable housing requirements stop development? And that is a potential, right? So the other two, I'm like, it's fairly safe ground. This one, this one, we do have to be careful, and that's why we're doing the feasibility study. If you think about it, again, so the final sales price, in this case, $100, is set by the market. What developers do is they look at their construction price and, and any desired fees, and they figure out how much they can pay for land. If you, if they have extra costs, because now their construction cost is $45, because we're adding $5 in fees, their desired profit stays the same. Now they can only pay $45 for land. Obviously, simple numbers, but the idea is really important, that if they can't bid for that land, if the existing McDonald's or whatever is on that land is more valuable than the price they can pay to developer, we can create a situation where we, where we limit development, and that's what we want to be really careful of. So there is a real risk of setting the, the prices too high. That's why we're, most programs, it's now standard practice, and the city is doing a feasibility study, and also offering incentives, density bonus or other things really help that. And the academic research shows, at least in the Bay Area, where the incentives are fairly well-balanced with the, with the bonuses, they don't, you don't actually see a significant impact on, on development. In other parts of the country, that's less true, though. So feasibility studies are really important. That's how we determine the level that, that makes sense, where you don't start to impact the development. This is where Leo and his team will take the lead. You look at data on multiple projects, you identify the minimum profitability requirements, and then you, you figure out if, if the, if the inclusionary housing requirements would push it so it's not, not feasible, or what level of requirements you can do and still keep development feasible. The last bit I want to talk about is there's some of the questions, if you want to move forward with an inclusionary ordinance, that we'll come back, that we'll come back with. Obviously, the biggest one, or the biggest two, is what percentage of the units gets set aside? Does a developer have to put 10% of the units aside as affordable, or 15? Then the depth of the affordability is the next one, and they often work together. You can say, the feasibility shows that we could do 20% of the units if they're not too affordable, if they're kind of close to market, or we could do 10% of the units if they're really affordable to that very low income. So those two, those two play off each other. Also ask about alternative options, that in lieu fee, or donating land, and then potentially the minimum project size that applies to, there's a few other things that might, might be worthy of, of council input on. And then impact fees have fewer questions, what are the types of development, what's the fee level, and what, if there are alternative options, often there aren't, but if you want to provide them. Next steps for Vacaville, so we're in Phase One, kind of the learning, the outreach, the figuring out what feasibility is, come back to council. If council wants to move ahead with Phase Two, then we look at drafting an ordinance and coming back to get more feedback on some of those specifics. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. This is always an interesting concept, and I, just looking at the map that shows the cities that have done it and the cities that are considering it, I know the concern as we move forward is, is what is unique about Vacaville? So what fees do we have? What's the, you know, the, the development climate and the challenges? And so what can you share as far as how you will make that assessment when you go through the feasibility study?
So anything that can be gathered on a local level will be gathered on a local level, land prices, rents, things like that. There's a few things where there's less data on the local level, that's more on the nexus side. But as much as we can tie it locally, we will. It'll be interviews with developers, the developers are on the steering committee, so we really do want to tie it to, to local data. And local, make sure we understand not just that, but what the, their expertise and their interest is, so we don't adversely impact them.
And how long will this feasibility study take?
So, Eric, do you remember what our timeline was?
The plan is to do all the research and development of the study over the course of the summer, mindful that we have to be done by September with as much as we can to maximize the use of the state funds. We anticipate being at Planning Commission, we'll be there next month, actually, they're going to get a similar presentation that the council's getting this evening. Trying to be at Planning Commission for their December meeting, and then back to council in the early part of '25 to get your direction. And then from there, if you direct us to move forward, we would develop the ordinance and do the additional outreach, and then bring something back to you, probably in the summer, summer of '25.
Right, thank you so much. Open up to the public for any comment? And then I'll come back. Sorry you weren't fast enough.
Just going to say that I think we need to look into this. I think it's more than time. I've heard this discussed by other councils. I don't know if any of you were on those other councils then, but it's been kicked around and kicked around, and I've watched as we don't meet RENA numbers for low and very low, but we almost always meet them for moderate and high. That's been a trend for a really long time, and I think this is one way that we can help turn that turn around, especially given the changes to the laws that the state has made, which give developers much more options and give you less bargaining capability.
Bring it back to the council, and Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, I just have two questions. One, I'm not familiar with the term "commercial linkage fee," so if you could explain that, that would help. And then, we are also getting in Vacaville several huge rental areas, and so I want to know if this is, applies equally to the huge rental things that are owned by people versus regular houses? So just tell me those two things.
Great, good question. So the idea here, a lot of cities have impact fees to fund schools, to fund safety, to fund parks. It's a very similar thing. This is an impact fee that funds affordable housing. So this would be for commercial development, not for, not for residential development. And you would kind of do a similar feasibility study to figure out whether or not there's an option to add a fee to, to new commercial development, and then that fee would go into a affordable housing trust fund. And then that money usually builds up for a while, depending on how much development happens. And then when there's enough affordable, when there's enough money in it, often cities will actually do kind of a request for proposals with that money. They'll say, we have $3 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, our priorities are senior housing, family housing, whatever your priorities are. Affordable housing developers, talk to us about what you can do. And then the affordable housing developers will say, oh, well, if we get $2 million in city money, we compare that with $3 million in state money and another $2 million in federal, and they'll come in with their proposals, and then you'll take that money from your Affordable Housing Trust Fund and spend it on affordable housing. There's a couple of other variations, but that's the most typical.
So does that happen in many cities with the commercial linkage? Because that's new to me.
Yeah, it's, it's common in cities with, with a strong economic base. So if you look at, if you look at San Mateo, or in Santa Clara Counties, it's not universal, but nearly, but very, but very common. And then, we didn't, as part of our research, we'll look at which cities in this area have impact fees. I think, I think generally, our sense is that some, some areas are pretty strong for development, there's a lot of developer interest, and that's a good indication that there's room to have a reasonable fee without adversely impacting the development, but that, that'll be Leo's job with the, with the feasibility study.
Okay. And did you want to address the apartment versus rental, rental versus home?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So cities, a lot of cities will have different standards for rental units versus ownership units. And obviously, it's a little more complicated with ownership units, because they typically sell at an affordable price, and then the person lives there as long as they want, and then they sell it, but they don't get to sell it again at the full market price. They get some, they get to build some value, some equity, but they don't get that huge windfall. So it's real similar. If cities have policy goals of supporting one or the other, they can push one policy a little, the requirement's a little higher, but it, the idea is similar for the, I may think, whether or not it would be a multifamily rental development, or like the large, single-family rental developments, it could apply in both those cases.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation and the feedback, and so look forward to hearing what this looks like in the fall.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. All right. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to item 10, report to the city manager.
At this time, thank you.
All right. Report to the city council. Councilmember Stockton.
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate the police department on Police Appreciation Week. You know, whether it's an election year, or any year, or any month, or any week, or any day, and twice on Sunday, I believe that public safety is the foundation of the quality of life in this community. I think it is the foundation upon which everything that we talk about at these meetings becomes possible, because public safety also means safe communities. And I think that's what most of us up here are trying to make sure that we accomplish is, is providing the safest communities possible for citizens that live here to thrive. So in law enforcement appreciation week, I'd like to thank the brave men and women that work for the Vacaville Police Department. They continue to exceed expectations, rise to the challenges that, that face them, and do a great job. As it relates to our Public Works Department, Brian McLean, you and your team continue to exceed expectations, to find innovative ways, to get projects done, analyzed, and accomplished, and at the highest of standards. You have great people, they have great leadership, and we are very, very fortunate to have you. And I do also agree with the, with the mayor. You are part of the triangle of public safety and, and trying to find ways to make sure that we get back and forth, that our, that our water works, but we don't flood. You know, you, you maintain kind of that balance. The last thing was mental health. It's Mental Health Week, and I know that we recently had an individual in distress on Interstate 80 that hurt himself. And I think it's important that we do address the stigma associated with asking for help. There are a lot of folks that go through ups and downs in their life, and there are a lot of folks that find themselves desperate, or frustrated, or angry. And, and I really appreciated your comments, Councilmember Roberts, about, you know, reflecting upon the last year and the loss of a friend. And I think sadly enough, too many of us have lost friends or family members that needed help, either couldn't ask, didn't ask, or maybe even, I would, you know, go so far as to say, maybe we weren't there to listen to them as well. And so I think it's great advice to reach out to, when you see people that are frustrated, that are down, and try to lift them up. So the other thing, on a more positive note, I had the opportunity to attend the first downtown farmer's market. The farmer's market is open on Saturdays from 8 until noon. It was an absolute great event. There were so many people downtown, local businesses taking advantage of that opportunity to sell directly to consumers. There were kids playing the violin. I mean, there's a new ice cream shop at Moxie. I mean, it was just really exciting to be downtown. I'm excited that the summers, the, the summer weather is here, and people are going to be out and about. So I want to encourage folks on, on Saturday mornings to maybe head down there, support a local business, have a good time with the, all the family fun and, and the food and stuff that's out there. So that's it.
Vice Mayor Ritchie.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be fast for the time. I wanted, I was able to attend the PAL soccer game, and there was no pictures up, because I found myself really enjoying the moment, really just embracing the moment, watching the PAL kids and the police officers have an amazing soccer game. It made me then, kind of really spurred me to think about how much I've been engaged with PAL the last two years, with PAL. PAL events throughout the city, nonstop, with seeing what PAL kids do for the community. They serve so much, they do so much, and what PAL is giving back to us. I've watched the Junior Giants and what PAL does. They, they're a part of some organizations, some events we have in the community. We had the opportunity to have a PAL officer recognized as a national award, and it's really started to hit home that they're one, they're nationally recognized, they're being a model agency, but they, they don't really have a facility. So I mentioned before, I brought it up, so I'll do it again. I want to agendize opportunity in my district, use my district dollars, to figure out, I'm very cognizant and aware, that's why I didn't say one word about, the very spirited conversation about how to spend more money, when we just talked about being in deficit. To me, my head was spinning, so I'd rather first figure out how to utilize the money, then we'll talk about spending money. So I'm very cognizant and aware of that issue. I don't want to cost more expenses to the city. I want to look and discover what's already in my district that we can repurpose and use some of my district dollars to repurpose without incurring additional expense to have to come from this body. So I'm looking for a motion on that. We can do it now, and I can kind of, I can come back and talk about more items if you want.
What's the motive?
So I want a motion to agendize the conversation to find PAL a, a better permanent facility in our city that can help serve the community.
On the street? Oh, I'm sorry. So you, you want to find a permanent location for a PAL center?
I want to explore the opportunity to find a, a permanent or a, a better location without building, developing, utilizing existing space, without incurring huge expenses.
So I guess the question is, that you're, you're asking, I understand that you, you want to put forward your district dollars to look in your district, to do something that the city doesn't have to make expenses, but then you're asking for a motion for the city to actually have to expend the time and effort to do it?
I'm looking for a motion to allow my district dollars to be utilized to explore the opportunity.
I don't think you have to.
Well?
So if you want to, you're fully entitled. I guess you just have to work with city staff to be able to go down that path.
I'd like to talk to you more about it.
Yeah.
Definitely interested in what you're thinking.
So.
But I like the idea of exploring something. I just don't, I don't think you need, you can direct how your district dollars are used to, to get the ball rolling, so.
Yeah, but if I want to utilize a space, my, we might have to give permission, or we might have to displace certain things, or make, make adjustments. So that would probably.
Well, I think maybe to Councilmember Stockton's point, it might be better to maybe have offline conversations with members of the council, that you might be able to come up with some ideas and then bring something forward. Right now, there's no, in other words, there's no plan to bring forward, except just, how do we tell staff to, to begin to do something?
So I, I can be very, really specific. I want to agendize the conversation to utilize space at, at Vacapena in my district. One of the portables owned by the city is not being fully utilized. I feel we can take it over, utilize my district dollars to rehab it, and make a place for the PAL kids.
Is it something that, okay. I mean, it's not that you can't. You can go ahead and ask for that. I guess the question is, is have you had a chance to talk with staff to maybe even explore what options are available?
So that's, that's why I want to agendize, is we have a conversation. We can figure out what would the total expense be, what was probability of having this be a possibility?
I guess, I guess the concern is, is we're in a very busy season, and then we're asking staff to put together a presentation with staff time for us to have a conversation. It might make more sense to actually meet with staff and/or, from the city manager and/or others that might be able to weigh in that from Parks and Rec to say, is there an opportunity? And bring that forward before we start agendizing council time.
Yeah, but I mean, if, it can get buried. You know, the camera could get kicked down the road five years later, 10 years later, and PAL kids are still going to have a place to call home, because we are busy, and we'll always have that excuse.
I'll second it.
Yeah. There's, there's never time, unless you make it.
I'll second it.
Member Chapman?
You, you mentioned wanting to relocate a portable onto the grounds of the school district.
No, no. The portable's already there. I want to reutilize, I want to explore the conversation, use staff to look at the opportunity to reutilize existing portable owned by the city that happens to be on the Vacapena property for the purpose of a PAL location.
Oh, it's already there?
Oh, yeah. It's already there.
And, and all I would say is, is have you spoken with PAL about this opportunity?
I, I spoke into PAL in a, in a manner that I would put them on blast, but I would like them to be agendized, have the opportunity to bring a, a presentation forward, to look at the feasibility, and express the needs, express the desires, the growth that PAL has, so we can all kind of then understand where they are, how much impact they have, and the necessity of having this before.
Well, I, just push back a little bit. The reason is, is because I did everything I could to get PAL inside the police department, and I, I can imagine a conversation with the chief and, and staff to say, what are your needs? And we're creating a need that may not be there, simply to bring it back to the council. I think we're, we're ahead of ourselves. I would just recommend maybe you have a conversation with the chief and running PAL to say, are your needs met, before all of a sudden we're opening something that we don't even know? That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I already have. I, I don't play chess on checkers, so I'm just, I've got a whole conversation I need to have, that's why I'm confident of bringing it front of everybody else.
Mr. City Manager?
Just a thought here. Helpful for me to get involved with that conversation, so I have an understanding of what the current use, the anticipated use, the so forth of that facility is. And then I'd be more than happy to sit down and have a follow-up conversation with the vice mayor, based on, you know, some broader discussions with, with our team. And then based on that discussion, we can come back and, and have a, if the vice mayor feels it necessary to ensure that the greater council has an opportunity to hear his proposal, then, then so be it. But I think it would be helpful to, to allow me the opportunity to meet with my team and find out just exactly what the facilities are and so forth, because if we're talking about agenda, you know, putting it on an agenda, looking at our upcoming meetings, it's going to be a while before we can have that discussion, just because there's a lot of other items on, on the, on the agenda forecast. This way I can at least get you some preliminary feedback on, you know, some of the challenges or the opportunities that may exist there.
That's, I mean, that's really the concept, is, is you can get the, you know, the conversation started, but allowing staff doesn't necessarily require it to come from us. You're wanting it to be agendized. I don't, I'm not opposed to something being agendized, but I don't think we even have a concept of what we're asking staff to do, that maybe working with the city manager, you can get there.
Um, yeah. I mean, I've already asked.
You got a motion to second?
Yeah, I already asked. I mean, I, I think.
I mean, I've just, with the efficiency of our time in looking how, how government can work, if you haven't had the conversation with the city manager, who we direct to run the city, PAL's a program within the police department, and you're, you're working directly with PAL, it's just, we can do it, but.
Yeah, I, I understand. I just, there's government speed and there's other speed, and I don't want the can to get kicked on the road, so I want to put kind of, I want to put everybody accountable. I want to have, like, all the conversation with the city manager prior to the agendized item, be in front of everybody, but I need that, I need that to be internalized, to look, to go forward, to know, hey, staff get together, staff do their part, we'll get ready, and then we'll present it.
That's fine. As long, as long as everybody understands the priority may not be there, I would just, if we do that, then you just work with the city manager to have conversations so that opportunities can be there. Over.
Sure.
Okay. You know, do you need to vote on that? Or is that fine? Good. Okay. Anything else?
Oh, yeah. So earlier, we had not as much conversation as I thought we'd have towards my endorsement of the East Solano Project out from wherever. So I wanted to, we met earlier with the, last week with the attorneys. I want the attorneys to be able to kind of reiterate some of the conversations and comments that you guys all have been probably connected with regarding like conflict of interest, the FPPC, the Political Reform Act, just to address everyone here on record of what conflict did I cause, or what do I have, or the lack of it. We're not going to leave here until they, they all know.
Is this something we can discuss, or?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay. I'm asking the city chairman.
I'm not sure this council comment time is appropriate for.
That's all I was asking.
Yeah.
For, for providing my legal opinion on, on some matters.
So, so when is it? If, if people can project and use a conflict of interest, if they can say there's a perceived conflict, and they, if they can bring those comments forward in these chambers, but if you can't react to that, address it, then there's a big problem.
I'm not sure what you can share, but I, I understand what, what you're trying to get.
Well, she can share the fact that I spent two and a half hours meeting with attorneys, and there's no conflict.
Well, you can make a statement.
Oh, I have a statement, but I want a statement from the attorneys.
I think it's, I think it's appropriate for, for you, Mr. Vice Mayor, to make, to make a statement, as long as the time isn't used to, to advocate for, for any certain position, but for you to make a statement to explain some of the comments and respond to some of the comments that have been made.
Yeah. You're fully within your right to make a statement.
Which would include as much as you want to share of our conversation.
Okay. All right. So first and foremost, I want to extend my deepest gratitude for everyone for the personal messages and responses that I have received regarding my endorsement of the East Solano Plan. It's essential to address both the support and the concern expressed as these interactions highlight the very heart of our democracy. While embracing the perspectives that have energized my decision to support the project, it is equally important to consider the opposing views. With respect and understanding, support, opinions, and endorsements, by their very nature, are individual beliefs and positions, according to the definitions set forth by the FPPC and the Political Reform Act, and backed by the opinions of our city attorneys, I can assure you, there have been no conflicts of interest by my endorsement. However, I recognize that there have been unintended perception issues. It is clear that change and unknown can evoke fear, and this has certainly been reflected in the reactions from our community in Solano County and Vacaville. As your vice mayor, as a small business owner, as a proud Vacaville resident, sorry. As a proud Vacaville resident, my endorsement of the East Solano project development was made with my best intentions of our community for both the present and the future. The pursuit of economic development, better jobs, attorney careers, and housing options are some of the foundational things that I am working hard as a vice mayor of Vacaville, along with my fellow council members in our community, to achieve. We have an exceptional amount of jobs heading here to Cal at Vacaville with our biotech initiative, and our entire staff and council have worked tirelessly to bring exceptional housing options to Vacaville through the numerous projects that we've already approved. I will continue to support and push for ways that we can support places like Travis with jobs, services, housing, and Vacaville as well, as we have been a critical partner to that space since 1941, and our commitment to Travis will never change. My opinions and endorsements are purely my own. They are, they were never meant to be represented, shared, and by the views of our fellow council members, the mayor, or the city of Vacaville as a whole. My goal has always been to foster community awareness, critical thinking, transparency, dialogue, and inclusion, and mutual respect to pave the way to perform informed decisions. Let's continue this conversation, not as a kind of sequence of disagreements, but as a collective endeavor to shape the city of Vacaville and the county of Solano we all cherish. So that was my open statement. You know, I know people are like, "I got you." You know, there was no hiding, you know? I posted everything in the paper for six weeks straight. I posted everything in the paper for six weeks straight. The website's made public. There's, it's clear as day. So I had long conversations with city attorneys, and there's no conflict. There's no perceived conflict. There's comments about some other person was corrupted and took money. I know the person, they weren't corrupt, take money. But hopefully you guys did any research. There's no money, no one's bought, you know. Some of the comments I've heard lately were really hurtful. You know, the last two times, I kind of held my tongue, and they were like, somebody was, kept saying, someone else can serve two masters. So that comment was really hurtful. I don't know if you guys know what the comment is. So I heard it one week, then the next week. It was more interesting, I was looking around at the council members, the chamber, and no one stopped it. No one called them on it. No one thought that was an issue. When someone says you can't serve two masters, I don't know if you guys understand how hurtful it is and where it comes from. So I want to give you the definition. Can't serve two masters. It's important to recognize that saying as deeply disgusting and problematic as its history with context of American slavery. The phrase was historically used to justify the perpetual enslavement of African Americans. It has often been cited to enforce loyalty and to discourage any attempt at seeking freedom or autonomy, thus embedding slavery as oppression. So when I hear that, and it was allowed for someone to say, you can't serve two masters, and no one stopped it, it was really hurtful. So I, you know, it's, I cataloged it, I watched it. So I'm glad you didn't say it to me now, because it would have been different. But it's just the fact that you're accusing.
We're not going to get into a debate here. So you can make a statement, but I just don't know.
I made a statement.
Okay, but you're looking at people, so I just.
So the statement was, for the whole body of the council, the next time somebody uses a derogatory, vagatory word about slavery and races, please step up and stop it. Because we're all here, if you all heard it and did nothing about it, you're accomplices. So if you hear it, do something about it. You have the freedom of speech, but you don't have the freedom of hate speech.
Well, just, I just want to caution that be careful that using words at everyone or no one, because I don't have the recollection that you're having that you took personally. So just be careful about how you include people that have no concept of what you're saying until you just, from this council. So I'm just going to say, if you wanted to have a conversation in the hallway with someone, that's fair. This is not the opportunity for the debate, for a public discourse, that not everybody feels what you're feeling, but I can empathize with the feeling that you may be experiencing. But there's a lot of conversations and comments that could be made from the public. And sometimes they can feel hurtful, or they can feel offensive, but we get caught up in what is considered either hate speech or really trying to call people out. And I think we all need to be sensitive to that. But let's not make assumptions that somebody did or didn't do something on this council, believing that they have interpreted the way you did, because that may not be, that may not be true.
You're right. I mean, if.
I just want to be fair to people who don't need to get brought into a sense of how you feel. I don't want to take anything away from the way you feel, but not everybody's going to see it the way you do, or that you did, or even remember what you experienced. It's just, that's all I'm saying.
True. I mean, but that's part of education. So if everyone is like, not aware of the word, that's one thing. But say it wasn't said is another. So the word was said twice, and it was just, I hope, I hope everyone was ignorant to the fact that it was racist. Because if you weren't, that, that's more hurtful. So I mean, it was said twice, you're the agenda, you can hear it twice. It caught, it made me pause. So it's just with that, you know, I can be, someone can come to the dais and say something very hurtful, but I can barely defend myself here. So it's interesting how, it's just very frustrating. Like, I asked the attorney to just acknowledge what she said for two and a half hours, but she won't do it. But someone can call me racist name or use racist words in front of everybody else, and it's okay without being corrected or, so it's just, it's very frustrating.
Well, I'm truly, I'm sorry for anything that you may have interpreted, but I just absolutely hope that there isn't a consideration that somebody on this, on this dais interpreted something a certain way, just, just so you know. But never, there's never a time that you, anyone should be making racist statements, but that doesn't mean that people are interpreting in the moment what's going on in this room the way any one of us would. But I can appreciate that we all can interpret the way things may be said to the, you know, from the public here. I appreciate you sharing. Councilmember Sol.
Thank you, Greg. And I totally apologize, I didn't, I didn't catch it for whatever reasons, but no excuses, apologize for that. You are absolutely entitled to your opinion, just like any other American. And even on reports of the city council, you have the right to speak to what you feel. And so I'm not going to tell you how it should have felt or anything to that effect. So I, you know, you know, I know there's a lot of concerns about California forever. I don't, I'm not going to make any statements now for different reasons, and one of which is, you know, I as an elected representative of Vacaville, based on something that's frankly and very transparently evolved since its known express status, and I'm clear, am clear on what the impact will be on the city of Vacaville. So I'm going to leave it at that, and I'm going to put out a motion. The motion is to have staff do a quick study to assess known and unknown impacts to Vacaville based on what is presented on, that will be coming up on the ballot. So just to further elaborate, there's different processes that, you know, for example, the county, since this is really within their direct purview, not the city of Vacaville. But the question is, how does, how does this particular project in this particular, that particular region of our county impact, possibly impact our city? To me, I feel that is within our purview to at least listen and consider what, inform the public on something that they're going to be voting for, particularly as Vacaville residents. So the motion is to direct staff, or direct city manager to, direct staff to do a quick study to assess the impact, potential impacts to Vacaville, come back and present what's known, what will be a known impacts and potential impacts as well.
I guess I'll just, before there's a potential second, I'm just going to comment that there's nothing in front of this council. I mean, as much as there's a lot of motion in the county, and there's a lot of emotion in the city, and there's a lot of conversation, I sit on a STA board and I hear it all day long, they're all recorded, everyone can watch them. Many of us speak out to the media, we hear comments that maybe we don't, but the reality is, is there's a lot of research that anyone can do and see the comments that this dais has made, one way or the other. I sit on a, on a Salona County Water Agency Board, and I bring the presentation to here so that the public can hear it based upon an issue that could affect Vacaville, and it also could affect the whole county. So these are issues, but I don't know of a quick study when we don't even know what the implications are other than economic, water, transportation, but all those tend to be regionalized versus localized. But Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. I don't want to seem as I'm objecting just for the sake of objecting, but I appreciate the comments and the spirit in which I believe that they're being conveyed, which is that there's a lot of unknown, there's a lot of uncertainty, and that it would be valuable to provide some knowledge about the unknown, so that we can give people some insight as to what to expect and what are the, the potential pitfalls, the dangers. I can tell you, having spent 36 years in development in my career, I could give you an idea what could likely be expected, but until they have the details and the analysis that will not happen until they are, if and when they are successful at the ballot this November, and they start getting into the analysis of the environmental impact reports and so forth, there's no way that I can say, or anybody at staff could say with any kind of certainty, here are the impacts. We don't know what the project is. And so I don't know if giving you our professional opinion based on our experience that a project of that magnitude will certainly bring forward new traffic impacts, new impacts to water. We do the same thing here with our projects that we analyze. But the fact of the matter is, is that we have a project that we can say, this project is going to generate X number of trips, our roadway is designed to accommodate Y number of trips, so they're going to have to install two more lanes. I have no knowledge, none of us have any knowledge that can provide that level of impact. And so while I believe that the intent is to provide more education, more information, I think that by doing something, evaluating a project that doesn't even have details is only going to, I would suggest, offer more frustration, because there's no real basis behind our conclusions, if that makes any sense. So I get the idea of trying to provide insight, but we don't have the data to evaluate to reach those final outcomes that I think you're asking for.
I'm withholding like comments on that, just for potential Brown Act, I guess, issues as far as not being agenda and whatnot. So I hear you, I understand that, and that's part of like what I was hoping to come, curious to see what would come back, whatever that would be from city staff's perspective. That's why I motioned.
Second to dais. Do I have a second?
Say your motion again.
The motion is to direct staff to do a quick assessment of what we know will impact, potentially impact the city of Vacaville, and what is unknown that could potentially, the unknowns, if we don't know if it's going to impact the city. Some of actually, the city manager addressed a couple.
Councilmember Wiley?
It just seems that we don't know because they changed their plan, so that's why I'm uncomfortable asking to second that. So I'm just going to say that.
Councilmember Chapman?
Is it premature to ask that of the city manager at this time? Would it be better to make your request once the ballot has been released?
What is, oh, sorry.
Once the ballot, ballot is released, usually it will have.
So once the ballot is released, as far as people are already voting?
Well, they know what they're voting. Well, they have something to read and hopefully make.
Right, I see what you're saying.
Well, yeah.
Well, one of the challenges is not, I get that not everybody on this council is involved in all the different areas that are affecting the entire county. So I'm at Travis, I'm at water, I'm at transportation, with all the other mayors and the board of supervisors. They're dealing with it in their realm, there's no project in front of us. Are there real issues? If you were to say, what potential areas could there be impact? We could say power, water, sewer, transportation, economic impact. I mean, there's all these things, but there's no, nothing specific. The county is going to do, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, they are going to do some form of an economic impact, or some kind of a financial impact, there's an impact that the county is working on that they have to do. It's not even out yet.
They're currently doing that evaluation to see what creating a new community would do to their resources in terms of being able to meet their request to provide those services for creating a new community. And so that's part of their evaluation, so that if the, as I understand it, if the ballot measure is successful, then they go to the next step. And keep in mind, there are multiple steps involved in this process. So the one before the county right now is, is the ballot measure to create, amend the county's general plan to allow this new community to come forward. They still have to go through many different entitlements and legislative actions and so forth, should the ballot measure be successful. And in talking with, you know, some of the county staff over there, they are doing what they can at this point, but in terms of evaluating the full project impacts, they don't have those materials right now. Those all come out with the environmental impact report. Certainly, there's, there's numbers out there, you know, 400,000 population, you know, number of projected units and so forth. And, and we can certainly say that a community of that magnitude is going to have those type of impacts, but I couldn't quantify them for you, and how that, that would really truly impact Vacaville. And I just, so again, sticking with your specific question, the county is working on that, and then depending on the outcome of the ballot vote, they'll move on to the next step of processes. And I'll throw this in, should the ballot measure go forward, we will definitely work as a region, because all the city managers in the county are talking about it in terms of, you know, watching out for it. But until it gets to be a real project, we don't have anything to debate or discuss. If it does get to that point, we will certainly be updating the council as we know more from the county on where that project is progressing, and watching with a very watchful eye when documents come out for public review and evaluation. We will be one of those that will be providing comments.
Does that?
Sorry, let me, oh, for sure, follow up. So when would that county study come out? At a 30-day?
They're working on it, but that's part of their ballot, their ballot initiative preparation, the county has to do that.
I don't have an exact date for you. I mean, that's something I'm sure we can reach out to the county and find out.
And that'll be made, that'll be made public anyway, yes. But there's a lot more information coming out, but there's nothing in front of the council. I just caution the council that if we're going to get into an unknown impact, it's not saying there's not an impact. I mean, I'm speaking to the media all the time on it. Any one of us can speak on behalf of what we know, not necessarily speak on behalf of the city, to recognize that these are real from your own experience. Know that. It's clearly, like anything, there can be benefits, there can be unintended consequences. Until there's a specific plan, it's hard to quantify or qualify what the real impact is. High-level conversations are happening all around us all the time. I don't disagree with you. I personally just don't see the benefit to try to get into a public discussion and a public debate from the city's perspective on a project that they don't have details on that stirs up more potential emotion than actual qualified information on a project that we haven't even seen, not even a specific plan.
I think we're afraid to stir the motion.
No, there's a lot of emotion out there.
The past couple of four years here.
Mr. Mayor, if, not to complicate the conversation any further, but just as a point of reference, to hopefully bring it into context that it may be more understandable for this council. We mentioned it tonight that we're currently working on the east of Leisure Town specific plan and environmental documents. We have a fair understanding of what that project will look like in terms of, you know, but we haven't done any of the evaluations, we haven't done any of the, you know, master plan studies or anything like that. So even if I was hard-pressed by you tonight to tell you the impacts of that project, which I know more about, I'd be. I know more about, I'd be remiss in doing that. I mean, or I would be, I would caution giving you those impacts because we haven't studied and evaluated them. So I'm not trying to, to avoid something, I just want to be responsible in giving you the right information. And right now, I don't have enough data to give you that information. I know more about the project that we're working on, and I still can't give you that level of detail.
No, I'm just saying like, that's part of the knowns that, that I think is important. Not, hey, we just don't know, but we will know. I think that's, to me, it's just personally, it's important to establish what those are.
Richard. I appreciate it.
So, but I support what council's at, so.
I, if I may, I just want to follow up. I know we're talking about California forever. I know Vice Mayor Ritchie had a, had a question about, about the conflict, and we're being asked to bring things back to the, put something on the agenda. Right now, there's nothing on the agenda, there hasn't been anything on the agenda that impacts California forever, that would impact a, a conflict situation for the vice mayor. I just also did want to make it clear for the council and for the public as well, council members are allowed to take positions in their individual capacity on, on projects, on candidates, on issues, as long as it's not a particular development project that's working its way through the, through the city's process, where they're predetermining their action. But council members are allowed to, to share their opinion on, on issues. So I just wanted to make that clear, and perhaps I should have done that at the outset.
That's, that's good input, so. And that's what I was alluding to, is that any one of us could leave this room tonight or tomorrow and pick up the phone and speak to any group or audience on your belief or your opinion, or do your own research. We do it all the time. We just do it on behalf of, as an elected official, but not as an official position for the City of Vacaville, that's all. Definitely encourage anyone to attend the meetings that are affected regionally, whether it's water, transportation, because you can equate to what might be an impact, and you can actually speak with some authority to say, how do, you know, how do you provide water? How do you provide power, and all these big issues? But when we get into the details, I think it's premature to, to actually be bringing something back to the council this time. Doesn't mean I don't have opinions, I just don't think we're in a position to have the conversation that then gets in front of the, the public simply because we're an elected body, or we're trying to do the, the governance of what's in front of us, and that's actually not in front of us at this point. Were you finished with any of your comments?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, listen, it's been a, it's been a long night.
There was a second, but --
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, there was a second, I'm just saying.
Who was, who was the second?
I understood that right.
You motioned, I don't know that there was a second.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I misunderstood.
Okay. There's no, yeah, there's no second. So there's a motion, no second. I think there's some clear understandings as far as, there's still a lot of complicated issues in front of us, a lot of unknowns, and for the council meeting, I was on, on the phone with media on this very issue. So to think that we're not talking about it, we are. A lot of community events where people are talking about it. Vice Mayor Ritchie?
Thank, thank you for that comment, and thank you, Melinda. That's the whole point. I did not want to leave this room, so we've been talking about it, and I appreciate your clarification and re, kind of re-edifying that, because that, that is the essence of what I wanted to make sure was, was known here. It's, for the last week, you've been taking calls, I've been the reason of the call. So from all papers here, I have office in Los Angeles, they try, I mean, I was on the front page of LA Times, National News, and so, least I can know is, like, when I come back here from the dais, that the conversation I had with attorneys, and how, I want to make sure that the same people that were persecuting me and saying, "We're going to impeach Greg Ritchie, there's a conflict," my attorneys and fellow body released, acknowledged, and know that actually there was no conflict. And I, it's really important that you displayed that, the attorneys displayed that, and you verbalized that, we all have conversations. So it's not just Greg Ritchie alone. I endorsed it, but everyone can talk about it, everyone is talking about it. And so those are points that are very key to acknowledge that you're talking to media, that media's calling me based on what I did.
Just to clarify today, they're not, not all media's looking for a reaction based upon your involvement. I get calls from the media all the time, just the reaction on issues, no different than anyone else could. So just for clarity.
Yeah. So, but the headlines, the headlines are like, were, "Hot water, there's a problem." So the first, like, the persecution, the perceived conflict was running rampant, and so I won the ability for the therapy acknowledgement that that was not true. That was it. To, to allow that to happen and not respond to it would, would have been very detrimental.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So with that, it's been a long night, Vacaville. We're going to just, we'll just call this meeting adjourned. Good night, Vacaville.